We'll go ahead and begin. Good evening. I hear my call to Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of April 8, 2021, to order. For those who would like to join us, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. City Clerk, if you could please conduct their roll call.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Coors.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
Present.
Mayor Holstich.
Here.
All council is present.
Thank you. Next, we will move into presentation. But before we do, I want to welcome on behalf of the whole city council, Justin Clifton, to the city. This is his first week, his fourth day, and his first council meeting. And we are so honored and privileged to have him join in our city and join our team and lead us here in the city of Palm Springs after arriving from Sedona. And he has a wealth of experience and expertise, and we're just so honored to have him on the team. Justin, if you'd like to say anything before we begin.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council. It is an honor and a privilege to be here in Palm Springs. I'm super excited. I've loved everybody I've met in the community, the staff, the council. I'm ready to serve and anxious to get going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Justin. So our next presentation is COVID-19 case update from Emergency Management Coordinator DeSelm.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council. Just a quick update. Not a lot has changed. We're still seeing that slow, steady decline, but nothing significant except for our move to orange. So as we can see from this slide, the current case rates are at 3.5 per day. We're getting close to the cusp of the yellow tier. The positivity rate is averaging 2%. A quick note on that, Tuesday, we had a case rate of 1.7% in the county, and then that was offset by a 2.4%. So we're going to continue to see small spikes here and there as we'll see once we get into the actual case slides. So as I said, and as we all know, we've moved into the orange moderate tier. The big change for that is increased capacity across all sectors, and each sector has a different capacity. Some move from 25% to 50%, some move from 50 to 75, or from 50% to open with restrictions. So the full list by industry is on the state's website. Big thing for us in downtown is bars are open for outdoor enjoyment, and breweries and wineries are now open indoors with 25% capacity. The other big change is outdoor live events are open with modifications, and those modifications are different depending on if it's a sporting event or a concert. And all of that information is available on the state's website. For cases this week, if we look across really the past seven weeks, we've kind of been at that same steady decline that I was talking about a couple weeks ago. Last week, the county actually had a small bump in cases. There were 1,363 cases, and going back the previous couple weeks, it was between 800 and 1,100. So that small bump doesn't really throw us off as far as moving towards the yellow tier. It's just as we get closer to zero, we're going to have a slower and slower decline. And Palm Springs had a bump the previous week, and now we're having another one this week. And the bump is we've had 11 cases so far this week. So when I say bump, it's not as scary as when we were saying 400 cases in a week. Another big thing is vaccines are open to all persons ages 16 and older. One note on the 16 to 18 age group, they can only receive the Pfizer vaccine, and that is just how those companies did the testing. They are doing testing to see if they can get into younger age groups, but you know, that's, that's not now. So if you are 16 or 17, you have to show up with a parent or guardian. They are not going to be checking for birth certificates or any other documentation. The only people that will need documents are emancipated minors. They have to bring that paperwork with them in order to get the vaccine. And that is all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you for the presentation and all your work on that and updating the community. Next, we have our COVID-19 wastewater treatment update from Assistant City Manager Marcus Fuller.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is our latest update with the COVID viral load in our wastewater. As I've done week to week, this is a snapshot, as you see, the COVID curve. And last fall, we were in, you know, the, the volume of less than 50,000 of COVID virus per liter in our wastewater, which, as you know, spiked up to 2.6 million. I'm happy to report we're still, as Mercy Services Manager DeSelm's mentioned, we're still in this slow, steady decline. I had been concerned because last time we had mentioned we had a slight uptick, and that's shown in this close-up view. We, as we entered into this slow decline, we had a viral load of about 118,000 per liter. And the latest tests, and these tests again are taken from last Monday and Tuesday, it was again higher on Monday at 98,000 and then dropped to about 38,000. And so as I mentioned, it's interesting because as we are a tourist town, we see a higher viral load on Mondays versus Tuesdays, and that trend has continued every week. And the good news is that in the last, the last test taken last week, we were, we're reporting around or estimating 229 cases based on a viral load of 38,000, and that compares to the county's reported 41 active cases. We also, as you know, are testing for two mutations that are found in the UK variant and other hyper-transmissible variants. Those mutations were detected in all of the samples, but the good news is that the last sample taken last Tuesday, we only had one of the two mutations detected, and it was at very low numbers. So that's very good news indicating that perhaps we don't have that widely transmissible type circulating within the community. But that said, and I'll state it again, it's important that we remain vigilant and continue to use face masks, social distancing, and other measures to prevent the spread of COVID, even as we reopen our economy and get vaccinated, because we still need to make sure that we don't have what everyone fears will be the fourth surge or wave that we hope never occurs. So with that, Madam Mayor, that completes my report.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions? First one, Marcus, is this just for the entire city, or can you narrow it down to certain areas within the city?
We're unable to narrow it down because all the sewage flows within the city, so this would be capturing all the sewage where sewers extend to. So primarily from the Whitewater River south and within the city limits, including small portions of Cathedral City, because we do provide sewer service to the Dream Homes in some of the area over there. But we aren't able to isolate it unless we started to do satellite sampling at specific targeted manholes, which we could do, but this is capturing the entire city.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? Thank you, Marcus, for the update and your leadership on that. Next, we have an announcement from Councilmember Garner. Thank you. I just wanted to let everybody know that I have a new intern, Davis Garcia. He's going to introduce himself in just a moment. I'm really excited to have him on. He's going to be doing some community outreach, so District 1 residents specifically, you're definitely going to hear from him, and I'm sure others in Palm Springs, you'll get wrapped up in that too. So hopefully, this is the beginning of more interns that we can have in our city and just supporting our young people. So Davis, anything you want to add?
Hello, everybody. It's honestly a pleasure and an honor of meeting all of you and working with the city. And I just want to say that I'll do anything possible to make the city a better place. And if you guys need any help, I will be open and willing to do anything that you guys need me to.
Thank you so much, Davis. We're really excited to have you here. Thank you, Davis. We're so honored to have you. Thank you, Davis. We're so honored to have you on our team. Thank you for your service to the city. We very much appreciate it. Finally, moving on in presentations, the city council would like to take a moment to remember four extremely well-known Palm Springs residents who unfortunately passed away recently. All of them were truly remarkable in their own right and made extraordinary contributions to our city. So tonight, Mayor Protem Middleton and Councilmember Garner will lead us through in memorializing this council meeting for those individuals. Mayor Protem Middleton, if you'd like to begin.
Certainly. Thank you. Robert Ember was one of the city's greatest champions of architectural and cultural tourism, who may be best known for creating Modernism Week's wildly popular double-decker bus tours highlighting the city's famed mid-century modern architectural treasures. For years, Robert also worked in close partnership with Palm Springs Bureau of Tourism, providing press and media tours to global journalists interested in covering our city's rich architectural and design history. Robert was passionately committed to educating residents and visitors, and really the whole world, about Palm Springs' modernist architecture and design. He was extremely instrumental in helping to popularize modernism around the world. In 2016, Robert was honored for his contributions to the city with a star on the Palm Springs Walk of Stars. Robert Ember's charismatic personality and love of our city's modernist roots in architecture truly made him like no one else, and he will be greatly missed.
Thank you. Next, Grace Garner is going to talk about Ms. Cora Crawford, an incredible loss for our city.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Cora Crawford was an original resident of Section 14, but she most recently resided in the Desert Highlands Gateway Estates community for more than 60 years. It was in that neighborhood that Cora was well-known as one of the key leaders working to strengthen community engagement with city officials while building upon and preserving her neighborhood's important African-American legacy in Palm Springs. Cora moved to Palm Springs from east Texas in 1952 with her husband Sam, and they had five children together. Forced by city leaders from Section 14 of the Aguascaliente Reservation in the mid-1950s, her family moved to the Crossley Tracks for a year until they built a home in Desert Highlands Gateway Estates in 1960. For many years, Ms. Cora directed the Palm Springs Child Development Center, which was a statewide model for childcare facilities, and I can personally attest was excellent. She also worked for Palm Springs' Unified School District as a substitute school teacher. Over the years, Cora became well-known in Palm Springs for her community service. She supported her church and served on many city boards and commissions, including Parks and Recreation, the city's Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Committee, and the Black History Committee. In addition, Ms. Cora was instrumental in helping to start the Black History Month and the Palm Springs Black History Month Parade in Palm Springs, as well as the creation of the James O'Jesse Community Center. For her service to the community, Ms. Cora was honored with the City of Palm Springs Athena Award, the Coachella Valley's most prestigious award for women leaders. Ms. Cora Crawford was a trailblazer in Palm Springs and a role model for future generations and leaders in her community. She, her legacy lives on with the Crawford family, who we all know as amazing leaders in our community. She will be greatly missed by her family, her friends, and her neighbors.
Next, we honor our dear friend and colleague, James A. Jim Gross. He passed away April 1, 2021, in Palm Springs, ending his struggle with stomach cancer. A former banker, Jim dedicated his entire life to serving his community. During the early days of the HIV epidemic, Jim volunteered with San Francisco and Los Angeles Shante Foundation. As the Los Angeles Shante Foundation matured, Jim served as a board member and chair. He may best known in Palm Springs for being the former chair of the 1PS Neighborhood Organization in 2013 and 2014. In addition, he was a member of the city's Human Rights Commission from June 2017 through December 2019. Jim was incredibly passionate about 1PS and their role, working with city government to make our community the best it can be. A great community leader who cared deeply about Palm Springs and our neighborhoods. Jim Gross will be deeply missed by his many friends throughout the community and at City Hall.
Finally, we want to acknowledge the passing of Peter Mayetta. Peter moved to Palm Springs in 2017 and immediately fell in love with the community. His passion led him to run for city council in District 2 in 2019, and he knocked on every door in the district. It was a pleasure to run with him that year, and I just so appreciated his warmth and dedication in what he was doing. He was passionate about affordable housing and the LGBT community and his love of pets, and his two dogs especially. He has gone very much too soon, and we're incredibly sad to have lost such a great presence in our city, and our hearts go out to his friends and family.
At the end of the meeting tonight, we will ask for a moment of silence to remember Robert Ember, Cora Crawford, Jim Gross, and Peter Mayetta. Thank you. Our next item is acceptance of the agenda. The city council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions or no vote, consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items be removed for separate discussion. I'd like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items staff or council member would like removed from the consent calendar for a separate discussion or vote? And just to note that the Arts Commission Chair has requested that the city council remove item 5D from the agenda tonight. So any acceptance of the agenda will include a removal of item 5D to come back at a later date. Are there any items that council members like to pull for separate discussion?
Madam Mayor, I do want to note that there was a revision to item 1A, which is the city council minutes. It was distributed at your 5 o'clock distribution. It contained some corrections to the meeting minutes for February 11.
Thank you, City Clerk. Are there any items that any council members would like to pull? Seeing none, this is the first time that has ever happened to me, at least so far, and the first time in years, I think, that I've seen that. So can I have a motion in a second for acceptance of the agenda with item 5D pulled and including the revision to item 1A? I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion in a second. This is historic occasion.
Thank you. Hopefully, that will be how the rest of the meeting goes tonight. So we have a motion in a second. If we can have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Coors.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. There are a lot of items that could have been pulled, too. Next, we have report of the closed session from City Attorney Jeff Ballinger.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council and members of the public, the city council met in closed session to discuss the items that are listed on the closed session agenda, and there was no reportable action.
Thank you. The next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You are asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you are speaking about. Please note that testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing, and general public comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. We attempt to call speakers around 9:00 PM or as close to that as we can. So tonight, the city clerk will be contacting speakers by telephone.
Richard Markusen, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Good evening, council members. This is Richard Markusen. I represent the Western Electrical Contractors Association. WICA is a state and federally approved apprenticeship program, training approximately 3,000 apprentices and tradespersons throughout California. I'm speaking to you tonight about item 4B, the Community Workforce Agreement, or PLA. The staff report was an excellent resource for you. They identified five points, three of which protect the city and two of which protect local contractors. These are the deal points that so far the building trades have been unwilling to agree to. I would also like to point out that the draft PLA only permits union apprentices. So any of the apprentices who are enrolled in WICA's apprenticeship program would be precluded from working on any city projects. It's WICA's opinion that the PLA does not serve the interests of the city residents or city taxpayers. There's very little that is being offered to you in return for locking yourself into a five-year agreement with no ability to escape or even rebid projects because you have received an unsatisfactory number of bids. The third point that the trades have refused to agree to is indemnifying the city for any damages associated with the project labor agreement. Obviously, these important points that your staff has been working on should not be ignored, and you should reject the PLA. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Mariel Valnunes, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mariel Valnunes with Inland Equity Partnership. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and City Council for letting me speak during this time. This is for today's the city council meeting on the item 5A Inclusionary Housing Program. And I wanted to thank the city, the staff, for putting, moving towards steps to, that would lead to an ordinance for inclusion housing. And I hope that there could be more committee input when this process comes around. And thank you so much. And I feel that the inclusive housing program zoning definitely should reflect the values and the needs of our community. As we know, we have, I really appreciate the city council, like, very progressive in a lot of issues that relates to homelessness and moving towards steps for affordable housing. So I hope this ordinance definitely reflects that. And one thing I did want to, just a quick overview, the issues of the dead city bonuses, I did want to mention that that doesn't always reflect to affordable housing. And so I just wanted to bring that up as something that was brought up in the report. But I did want to give an overall input in regards to the recommendations of the staff. I think that the city should focus on affordable cell units. That should be the path that we would like to see. And then also, in regard to the second item, should the city prioritize the integration of affordable units to market rate? I think yes. We do need to have mixed-income housing throughout the city and not have concentrations of poverty. And then also, the project, we do feel that affordable housing for cell units should be something that we need to work towards, and reduce fees for onsite and increase fees for offsite. And if there's any fees that come out of the offsite, to put it for restrictive funds so that it goes into the affordable housing. And yes, please, count our and our community partners to help with this language, and please, let's move towards affordable housing with this inclusionary zoning. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Eric Kristin, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Good evening, councilmembers. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Eric Kristin. Are you getting that feedback, too?
Yeah. I'm going to call you back.
Let me do this. Try this. Sorry about that.
Okay.
My name is Eric Kristin, and I'm the Executive Director of the Coalition for Fair Employment and Construction. And I wanted to just talk tonight about a couple of issues with PLAs that are typically highly discriminatory for non-union workers that we hope can be in any negotiations considered. First and foremost, local contractors should be able to use their workforce and not be forced to hire workers who don't work for them through a union home. Secondly, any worker that does work that isn't part of the union is able to keep their benefit package and their monies, which is more than $20 per hour. They're able to keep that and not have it sent to a union health welfare pension plan that's anywhere from five to 10 years' vesting requirements. That means they won't get that money back. Thirdly, that any state-approved apprentice is able to work on your project. There are fine union and non-union state-approved apprenticeship programs in the state. All state-approved apprentices, young men looking to better their future that are in these programs and working hard, should be allowed to work on any project that you build under any agreement. So these are three provisions that we hope staff continues to fight for. They're only fair for everybody involved, and I thank you for this time and for your deep consideration of this issue. Sorry about the connection. I don't know why it sounds so crazy, but I hope you got all that. Take care.
No, great connection. Thank you. Gretchen Gutierrez, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you, Anthony. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, city staff, and a welcome to the new city manager, Mr. Clifton. My name is Gretchen Gutierrez. I'm the CEO of the Desert Valleys Builders Association. I look forward to the day when we're all back together in the same room and we can have these conversations face to face. I am calling you in regards to new business item 5A on tonight's agenda, the proposed discussion on inclusionary housing programs. Earlier today, the DVBA submitted a very lengthy letter, piece of correspondence to the city clerk, to be distributed to the city council members. And I'd like to, first of all, make sure that that was distributed to everyone, and I believe it has been. I'd also like to further note that we have listed a number of concerns that we have with any implementation of an inclusionary housing program within the city of Palm Springs, given the current high cost of fees that are being absorbed in both the for-market and affordable marketplace housing units that are going into the city at this particular point in time, and that new market-rate housing or rental housing would be bearing the brunt of subsidizing affordable housing under an inclusionary housing program. We have provided you with two different case studies as part of the correspondence that I've sent you this evening. In addition, we will be meeting with the city manager in approximately a week and a half, where we will be providing him a hard copy of our full development fee impact study report on the analysis of the nine cities here in the valley and the cost of doing business in each of those communities, including within the city of Palm Springs. We'd like to have the city council take a hard look at the cost of adding inclusionary housing into the city. Yes, in concept, it sounds like a wonderful idea to be creating affordable housing within the market, and yet, unfortunately, the reality is it does very little to actually generate affordable housing units, either in the rental side or the for-market side at the end of the day, because someone else has to bear the burden of subsidizing those units, whether it's market sale or rental units. With that, we look forward to the continuing discussion this evening. With that, we look forward to the continuing discussion this evening amongst the council and staff and to the presentation when it's on the agenda. And so we'll be monitoring that later on this evening. And as I say, we look forward to having further engagement with the city, both at the staff level and the council level as this moves forward. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you this evening.
Thank you. Russell Johnson, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. My name's Russell Johnson. I'm calling on behalf of the Associated Builders and Contractors, Southern California chapter. We have state and federally approved apprenticeship programs covering Riverside, San Bernardino, Orange County, and LA County. We're calling today regarding your community workforce agreement that is on your agenda. We'd like to just state three things that we'd like your council to consider as you move forward with negotiations on this item. One, we ask that local contractors, our members that are, that have businesses within the city of Palm Springs, be exempt from the PLA, from the Community Workforce Agreement. Simply put, if they're local and they have local employees, they should be able to work on steady jobs. Second, we ask that you include all statewide-approved apprenticeship programs. Apprenticeship programs provide opportunities and pathways to prosperity for young men, women, veterans, members of disadvantaged communities, and second chancers. And without those opportunities, all people should be able to benefit. Furthermore, a rising tide raises all ships. So when there's, when there's a lack of access to apprenticeship, because perhaps there's a waiting list, when you have multiple apprenticeship programs, you provide greater opportunities to more apprentices. Last, we ask that you ensure that if a contractor has their own health and benefit plans, that they allow their employees to continue to benefit from those. If they're forced to pay into union plans, it's likely that they will never benefit from those benefits that they're paying into. And it's their money, their effort, and yet they may never benefit from those health and benefit plans for the unions. So thank you. We appreciate your taking the time and the consideration, and thank you for your diligence on this item.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Anna Cabral, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Holstead and members of the council. My name is Anna Cabral and I'm with UFCW Local 1167. On behalf of the 21,000 essential members that our union represents, I'm calling in to express our support for item 4B on tonight's agenda, approval of a community workforce agreement by and between the city of Palm Springs and the San Bernardino Riverside Counties Building and Construction Trades Council AFL-CIO. UFCW Local 1167 fully supports the community workforce agreement, CWA, with the conditions the Building Trades Council has already agreed to. If there is anything more apparent after these last months, it is that working families deserve more opportunities to thrive. A CWA in the city of Palm Springs will help create new job opportunities, and more importantly, it creates careers. All of these new opportunities would be made available to historically undeserved groups of people. And so we believe Palm Springs residents deserve access to these good-paying jobs with benefits and safe working conditions. So for these reasons, we urge the council to vote to approve item 4B this evening, establishing a community workforce agreement, as agreed by the San Bernardino Riverside Counties Building Trades Council, with the conditions that have already been agreed to and with no additional changes or exemptions as were presented in the staff report. Thank you and have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you. Vanessa Ingalls, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hello, Honorable Mayor Holstead and members of the city council. My name is Vanessa Ingalls and I am an electrician. I have worked throughout Riverside County for 14 years. I am also the founder of the Tradeswomen's Sisterhood. We are an organization that promotes equitable opportunities to women in the building trades. Having leadership that not only believes in creating equitable opportunities but follows it up with action is very important to myself, the tradeswomen I represent, and the minorities wanting to enter, start a career in the building trades in your city. I urge the city council to vote the approval of item B4 this evening, establishing a community workforce agreement, as agreed by the San Bernardino Riverside County Building Trades Council, with the conditions the Building Trades Council has agreed to and no additional changes or exemptions. A community workforce agreement is so much more than just local hire language. It is a commitment from city leadership to create opportunities for the communities they represent. Opportunities for women, LGBTQ, minorities, at-risk youth, youth, and previously incarcerated individuals. Opportunities for all of these individuals that include nondiscrimination in referrals, employment, and contracting, regardless of race, gender, age, sex, sexual orientation, political affiliation, or membership in a labor organization. These opportunities are backed by equality for wages, benefits, working conditions, hiring, career advancement, training, and union representation. By creating exemptions for local contractors, you're allowing local contractors to profit from your community's tax dollars without the commitment of creating these opportunities. Equitable opportunities do not have exemptions for a select few. I urge the city council to vote the approval of item B4 this evening, establishing a community workforce agreement, as agreed by the San Bernardino Riverside County Building Trade Council, with the conditions the Building Trade Council has agreed to and no additional changes or exemptions. Thank you for your time and commitment to creating equitable opportunities for Palm Springs.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Matt Bosquet, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm addressing item 3A, the eviction warrant claim. I first wanted to sincerely thank councilman Corrus and staff for reaching out to landlords prior to the meeting for input and their work on this issue. For brevity, I assume the purpose of allowing tenants to remain in private property long after their obligations are past due is for some form of public policy that you want to try and help tenants remain in business in Palm Springs. Assuming that is the case, it is surprising that you're asking a very limited number of your citizens to shoulder 100% of the cost and risk behind the implementation of the policy, waiting to collect what is legally due yet again. If this was truly of importance to the city, the city should pay tenants past-due rent, satisfying the tenant's obligation while at the same time avoiding landlords going bankrupt. You could then collect on your loan to the tenants when they pay their rent at the end of the moratorium. The city is being showered with cash from the federal government, the state, and the county, as well as a property tax winfall from a super-hot residential real estate market. I guess so much so that item 5B is about hiring a firm to help you smartly invest that money. So if you truly believe in a policy of keeping the tenants in place, then invest your money behind that. Pay the tenant's overdue past rent now. You can collect it later, so it's just cash flow and costs the city nothing. As landlords, we had to pay your property taxes recently, yet you're preventing us from collecting the rents which go to pay your property taxes. People seem to think landlords have vast wells of money and can afford to just keep paying you. I urge you to do something that reflects economic reality. By paying directly to the landlord, you create a win-win for everyone, and perhaps you might not have to pay Chandler Asset Management to figure out where to invest the city's money, instead invested in us. It costs you almost nothing, and you can be sure of a successful implementation of a policy we all want, keeping a vibrant commercial community. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. David Friedman, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Holstead, Mayor Protem Middleton and members. My name is David. I am speaking to you on agenda item 5. Good evening, Mayor Holstead. Yeah.
You can.
Okay? Okay. Good evening, Mayor Holstead, Mayor Protem Middleton, and councilmen. My name is David Friedman. I am speaking to you on agenda item 5E. In my capacity, a chair of the Community Energy, Community Advisory Committee and its Palm Springs Working Group. The Working Group met Sunday to consider the issues out in the staff report. Notwithstanding challenging conditions in its first year of operation, DE has achieved four goals. Under its carbon-free program, the city's carbon footprint has substantially reduced. Those enrolled in its desert labor program have saved nearly $250,000. DCE recently signed solar and wind power purchase agreements that will result in significant savings for its customers and bring a new job Palm Springs. Considering these need to maintain food and finances.
I'm sorry, David.
While keeping electricity rates as low as possible and contributing to DCE reduction goals set out in policy and the DCE Sustainability Plan.
David.
Working Group recommends.
Council, because we had a bad connection, David Friedman did send me his written comments. He had one minor revision. He's going to send that to me right now, and then I'm going to read his comments when these other public comments are concluded. With that, Jenny Weisman, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. I'm addressing item 5A. Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. I'm Jenny Weisman, Executive Director of the Pet Ministry PS and New Harmony Habitat, a sanctuary for senior people and pets. And I'm happy to report that after being on hold in 2020 since the start of the pandemic, our project is now back on track and is developing our senior community, and we hope to begin construction in Palm Springs within the year if possible. We are getting a lot of interest from potential investors and potential residents who are signing up for our no-obligation waiting list. We are building our development with an innovative, low-cost material manufactured locally at a factory in India that Madam Mayor toured last year, and she told us then that she was very impressed with our plan. Our current plan consists of 72 units built at half the cost and in half the time of conventional construction. Other approved local affordable communities are taking up to three years to be built. Our timeframe is six to eight months. We encourage the city council to reduce fees and explore ways to expedite and streamline the building process for new construction so we can meet the demand and solve the current housing crisis, especially for seniors, with our expedited building plan. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Ariselle Palafox, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ariselle Palafox and I am the Deputy Director at Lift to Rise. I'm here to comment on item 5A, on the city's consideration of the inclusionary housing program. As you know, we at Lift to Rise have been local and regional partners around the goal to increase the supply of affordable housing and reduce the percent of families that are rent burden in our region. And we have been incredibly grateful for the city's participation and recent pledge of its support for this goal and this vision. And while we encourage the city to explore and pursue policies towards this aim of production, we feel that it's an important conversation and we ask that the city take into account the various stakeholders that will be directly impacted, including residents themselves. We look forward to the conversation and discussion today and will continue to track and stay engaged. Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Eric Lemus, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you so much. Hi, this is Eric Lemus. I'm organizer for Inland Equity. I'm sorry.
Okay, Eric, if you could restart.
Hi, yes, I'm sorry. My name is Eric Lemus and I'm the Coachella Valley organizer for Inland Equity Partnership. I just wanted to say that I'm an organization and believe that every person has the fundamental right for housing. We would, I'm calling to support inclusionary zoning. We have been organizing here with the different cities in regards to the housing element and different zoning that would actually be pertinent to revising the housing element in and around Coachella Valley and Riverside County. And in particular for Palm Springs, while organizing with the residents and organizations in Palm Springs, we just have encountered individuals and families who have been impacted by a legacy of racism and separation and lack of resources for bringing communities together of different incomes. So before healing, we can, you know, we can begin for our families and descendants of those removed from Section 14. The city must acknowledge the hurt of our history of urban renewal and impact inflicted on the city of Palm Springs, basically with our, you know, residents of Indian, Indigenous, color, people of color communities. And so therefore, we definitely think that, you know, a multi-mix zoning, inclusionary zoning would be beneficial to different communities. The city should also focus on cell units and to include affordable and the ability to include and build wealth in a community improved by ownership. The city should work to provide assistance for residents to purchase the homes, rental units, and so forth. Also, the city should prioritize the integration of affordable units into the market rate. Integration of affordable units is going to definitely be key. We want to make sure that now we're just not making, you know, affordable housing but long-term, permanent affordable housing, right? We need to have mixed-income housing, not just, you know, concentrate, you know, a certain class of folks. And therefore, we just want to make sure that the city knows that, continue to organize different efforts with different residents and families to make sure that the intake of, you know, long-lived residents of the Coachella Valley as well as historical residents of the Coachella Valley are also being heard. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. Joe Witcher, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hello, good evening. Hello, good evening, Mayor Holstead and council. My name is Joe Witcher. I am a 32-year union sheet metal worker. For the past 11 years, I have been a business representative for the union, specifically assigned to Riverside County. I did send a written communication to you by email this afternoon, and I just wanted to follow up, you know, with a phone call here and, you know, kind of briefly, just, you know, so you could put my voice with the communication. We have come a long way in 10 years, and I did cite some examples of the things we've seen. And when I was a brand-new vet, we had a huge amount of unfair labor practices in the desert area. I cited some examples of some large projects with some really bad things going on out there. What the Community Workforce Agreement does, it gets representation to these members. We've done a good job of this. We've moved forward. And, you know, we've got the Community Workforce Agreements, project labor agreements all over the inland empire, and it's only helped. I've seen a huge improvement in the working conditions, equal opportunities, you know, workers that are represented in the workplace. We've been coexisting well, you know, with all the partners. Anyone can bid these Community Workforce Agreement projects, and, you know, things have been going well. So I urge you to support the Community Workforce Agreement with the conditions that the building trades has agreed to, and I thank you for allowing me to call in and speak my mind on this.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Taylor Varner, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Good evening, Mayor Holstead and members of the Palm Springs City Council. My name is Taylor Leibolt and I am the Regional Affordable Housing Planner for Lift to Rise. As you know, we organize a cross-sector network of over 50 partners dedicated to a future where all Coachella Valley families have access to healthy, have access to safe, stable, and affordable housing with more money to spend on things other than rent. We applaud the city for taking up this discussion on an inclusionary housing program to explore options for increasing the production of affordable housing in the city. Our collaborative goal is to reduce rent burden by 30% through the production of 10,000 units by 2028. To reach this goal, we know we need bold answers to address the structures in place that act as barriers to development. that act as barriers to development. Our CAN partners have identified the key barriers to be long development timelines, incompatible zoning and land use regulations, and high development costs. An Inclusionary Housing Program should carefully consider these barriers to development in order to not inadvertently add to them. Offering strong incentives in excess of state requirements to projects that incorporate affordable housing could be important features in a program. Help address these barriers and for the development of more affordable housing in the city of Palm Springs. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Okay, Mayor and Council, I'm going to read the letter from David Friedman, although I will not be reading it as quickly as he could. With that, good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is David Friedman. I am speaking to you on Agenda Item 5E, and my capacity is Chair of the Desert Community Energy Community Advisory Committee and its Palm Springs Working Group. The Palm Springs, I'm sorry, the Working Group met Monday to consider the issues outlined in the staff report. Notwithstanding challenging conditions in its first year of operation, DCE has achieved its core goals. Under its carbon-free program, the city's carbon footprint has been substantially reduced, and those enrolled in the Desert Saver Program have saved nearly $250,000. DCE recently signed solar and wind purchase, power purchase agreements that will result in significant savings for its customers and bring new jobs to Palm Springs. Considering DCE's need to maintain prudent finances while keeping electricity rates as low as possible and contributing to GHG reduction goals set out in state policy in the city's sustainability plan, the Working Group recommends that DCE suspend the 100% carbon-free plan for Care &amp; Farrah customers. The carbon-free product would continue to be sourced solely from carbon-free generation with the minimum renewable content required by state law. As DCE's financial reserves are built up, it should strive to restore the 100% carbon-free plan to Care &amp; Farrah customers and increase the renewable portion of the carbon-free product beyond the minimum state requirement. To reduce the economic distress its customers are now experiencing, DCE should adopt the Bill Assistance Program outlined in the staff report. The 3% delinquency rate is likely what other utilities are seeing because of COVID. DCE should also continue to actively promote the Desert Saver Program, whose rates are pegged to be at or slightly below those of DCE's base product. Finally, I would like to, I would like to inform you that CAC now has two Palm Springs vaccine vacancies. We should appreciate your recommendation of candidates preferably from Council Districts 1 and 4 not currently represented on the CAC to ensure that the CAC's membership fully reflects the community it serves. Thank you for your consideration. And with that, we did have one public comment that we were not able to reach, Moro Varela regarding item 4B, and that concludes the public comment.
Thank you, City Clerk. We have no public hearings tonight, so we will move forward to legislative items. So the next item is item 3A, consideration of an urgency ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on eviction for commercial tenancies. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. This item is before you again tonight as a result of the discussion that the council had at the last meeting in March. As the council will recall, the council originally adopted a eviction moratorium back in April of 2020 that covered both residential and commercial tendencies. That moratorium was extended through September. In September, it was let lapse. However, that was done with the understanding that we'd keep an eye on the situation as the pandemic continued and indeed during late December and January into February, there were additional restrictions that caused impacts to restaurants as well as other resort businesses here in town. As a result, the council asked that we bring back some options for the City Council to consider, which we did in March of this year. The City Council discussed the last meeting and directed the Emergency Services Director to issue an order extending at least temporarily the time within which commercial tenants are protected through the end of this month, essentially till April 22nd, while we come back with additional options based on what was expressed at the March meeting. Some of the concerns that the council expressed at the March meeting included protecting local non-chain establishments as well as ensuring that rent is kept current on a go-forward basis for tenants, providing for a reasonable repayment period for back due rent that has accumulated over the last year or so, encouraging those businesses who receive financial assistance from the city that they use that financial assistance to pay their rent in order to protect the city's brick and mortar businesses. The council also expressed a desire to encourage tenants and landlords to reach agreement as to payments and repayment obligations, as well as not overriding any lease or rental agreements that might have been made during the COVID emergency. The ordinance that's before you tonight is a proposed urgency ordinance. I believe it accomplishes those items that the council wished to have addressed at the March meeting. I will note, however, that the particulars of those issues are left to the sound discretion of the City Council. So some of the numbers that I'll mention here are certainly flexible, and the council could decide to change those if it wishes. First of all, the ordinance primarily follows the third option that was identified in March. That is, it amends and extends the protections of the previous commercial moratorium. It defines a chain establishment as one that has fewer, I'm sorry, has more than 11 locations worldwide and has certain standardized features. That definition is taken from a planning code up in San Francisco. Again, that number 11 can be changed, and the standardized feature element could also be changed if the council wishes. The use of the word chain in this proposed ordinance is that a chain store would, a chain tenant would not be entitled to the protections of this ordinance. Only non-chain locations would be protected. The ordinance also requires the tenant to remain current with the tenant's lease or rent payment obligations as those payment obligations existed at the time of the ordinance adoption. The ordinance requires tenants to enter into a written agreement with their landlord within 20 days following the ordinance's adoption, agreeing to pay back any unpaid rent, and that repayment needs to be made within 12 months. It's proposed to be in 12 equal installments. Again, those numbers can be changed should the council wish to do so. The ordinance also provides some protection for landlords in the form of requiring the tenants to pay back at least 25% of their payment obligations that accrued between March 20th and March, March 2020 and March 2021. The ordinance provides that that payment must be done within 20 days following the adoption of the ordinance. Again, those dates can change if the council wishes. The ordinance also requires that tenants use any assistance that they've received from government agencies to the extent feasible. And finally, it exempts from coverage any landlord relationship that's governed by a written agreement that was entered into when the Riverside County went into the red tier, which is March 17th. Again, that's entitled to ensure that this ordinance doesn't preempt any existing landlord/tenant relationships that exist. So again, staff and City Attorney's Office believes that the proposed ordinance recognizes a reasonable compromise between the interests of landlords and tenants. The business retention liaisons have met several times with the landlord and tenant community here in town and have heard from them. Most recently, this last week, the liaisons met. The suggestion was made to include some sort of notice requirement for the landlords, to require the landlords to provide notice of the rights that are provided under this ordinance to their tenants, as well as some provisions for the manner of notice, such as mail or certified mail. So if the council is so inclined to adopt the ordinance tonight, we could certainly include those provisions. That concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Attorney. A note for Council, since we didn't have any agenda items told, I was so excited to jump into the rest of the agenda that I skipped over inadvertently the council comments and reports and then the consent calendar. So we'll do this item, I confirm with the City Clerk, we'll do this item, and then we'll go backwards to those. Sorry about that. We have a lot to cover tonight, so I'm anxious to not keep Justin until midnight on his first meeting. So any questions for city staff or comments? Councilmember Core.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So a couple of things on this, and really thank you to the City Attorney for all your work on this. I really also want to thank Michael Braun, who really came up with some of the ideas for this as part of the mayor's COVID task force, and really helped with brainstorming some of these issues. So just want to sort of follow up. We did have several meetings. We reached out to all the landlords who have commercial landlord licenses in the city. We had two meetings with them. We've met with commercial tenants. The mayor and I met with a business retention meeting. Mayor Protem and I met and heard, you know, from folks on Main Street. So there've been a number of communications on this, and there was strong support for something generally that we're seeing here, including from the majority of the landlords. And Michael Braun did ask me to express his strong support for this, but he couldn't be on the call. And I think, you know, when we passed our, when we were on the few cities to pass a commercial eviction moratorium, and even though courts aren't taking these cases and not expected to be able to take them due to backlog till a year from now, the concern is that on the tenant's side is it's a year, there was a second lockdown, as City Attorney said, and paying a year back rent all at once is not feasible. In talking to most of landlords, their concern is particularly the people who aren't going to pay any rent. And in talking to some of them, they're like, well, they're going to evict us anyway, once they can, so why, we'll just stay as long as we can. But giving them a path forward could, one, keep them and keep our storefronts and our businesses, and also get some money to landlords. And that's sort of how we worked on this compromise between the two groups. I do have a number of sort of questions. I asked the City Attorney and shared with Mayor Holstich, who's the other liaison, and they're more really policy questions, so I just want to share my thoughts on those. One is on notice, making notice a requirement, but making it easy. So any way that you've notified or communicated with a tenant previously, that's provable. So text messages, emails. We don't want everyone to have to go send a certified letter to every commercial tenant in the city. So I would support that, but would that change? I think, what was the other stuff I had here? I think having to pay 25% back rent almost immediately, and then on May 1st, full rent, that's four months' rent that'll be due within a week, might not make sense. And rather than a year definitive 12-month equal payments, what I would recommend is just as long as you're paying your full current rent, starting with your next rent payment, that you pay up to, you have to pay at least 10% of your back rent for the next 10 months. I think just make it simple. Some people may want to pay more now so they can pay, you know, and we want to give a little more flexibility there. But I think 25% plus a full month's full rent at once is going to make this really hard for the, for people to be able to take advantage of this. I think the requirement of tenants to enter into a written agreement with the landlords within, I forget about the time, 20 days. I mean, there's some landlords who won't enter into a written agreement with a tenant. I don't, I think we want to encourage that. I think it's a great idea, but I don't think requiring it, given that this is already, this is, if we pass this, it's the law. So I think that would be a better thing on that. Let me see if I have anything else. I think that covers my input, and really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council comments or questions? Mayor Protem Middleton.
Yeah. I concur with Councilmember Coors, and I want to compliment Councilmember Coors and Mayor Holstich for your leadership on this issue. I think we're carving out what is an effective compromise in a very difficult situation. So I encourage support for this.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Other comments or questions? Councilmember Wood.
I just want to reiterate what Mayor Protem said. Thank you very much to the mayor and to Jeff Coors, especially for reaching out to landlords to see what their response would be. It really helps making this decision much, much easier, and I support it as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Garner.
So when we're talking about supporting it, we're supporting it from regarding the changes that Councilmember Coors stated. Right? Okay, I'm here, I'm seeing that. Okay, yes, I have the same concerns, so I appreciate Councilmember Coors listing those, especially with requiring so much rent to be paid. I know that everyone's circumstances are different, and commercial rents can range from, you know, $2,000 a month to $10,000 or more a month, you know? It's just a huge, it could be a really huge burden, especially for our bars that have been fully closed. I don't know how they could possibly pay any rent, most of them. And, you know, whether or not you frequent them, they are a big part of our city, and I don't think that we want to lose that aspect, some of those standalone lounge spaces that do not offer, usually offer food. So I think as long as there's that flexibility, then I'm good with moving forward. I just don't want it to be so hard to fit in that no one can really benefit from it.
Thank you. I agree, and I have shared the same concerns. So I'm glad that we're, have consensus there. So Councilmember Coors, I know you laid out a number of items. Do you want to make a motion and summarize what those changes are?
Sure. So I'll move the item with the following changes. One, that notice will be required, I guess, what day is it? By May 1st, because that's when next month's rent will be due, in whatever form of communication that has been used previously. I think we had that in the ordinance before. But so the landlord can prove it if the condition comes up. So email's fine, messaging's fine, but that notice happened as mail as well is fine. That we delete the 25% requirement to pay back rent in a fast timeframe and pay back rent due, starting May 1st, in 10, with no less than 10% monthly over the next 10 months. That we delete requiring tenants to enter into a written agreement with their landlords. And I think that was all.
Thank you, and I will second that motion. There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? The man can leave a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Coors.
Yes.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Middleton.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. And Madam...
Thank you. So we will go back...
Madam Mayor, before we go back to council comments, I do have one more public comment, if we could accommodate. Give me one second.
Yes, thank you.
Edwin Ramirez, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comment.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Holstich, Mayor Protem Middleton, and Councilmembers Garner, Coors, and Woods. Thanks, and thank you all for letting me bring in my public comments kind of on this moment. And I'm happy to welcome also the new city manager to our city. I currently serve as a Human Rights Commissioner for the city, and I'm making public comments as a core organizer for Banihan Desert. Many families like those in District 1, our city's majority-minority district, have been in Palm Springs for generations. I want to express my deepest condolences. I want to express my deepest condolences to the dear family and loved ones of the elder leader and icon, Cora Sue Crawford. Thank you, Mrs. Crawford, for all you have done. You remain a true inspiration. In honor of our elders and those who have built their homes and families here in Palm Springs, this evening, I want to show my support for Agenda Item 5A on inclusionary, the inclusionary housing program recommendation. I'm in agreement with many of the points outlined in my colleagues, well, outlined by my colleagues at Inland Equity Partnership, Eric Lemus and Maribel Nunez, who reminded me she also wanted to include that we should encourage the city to provide assistance for residents to purchase homes. I urge the city council to please keep thinking creatively, as you have, and progressively about, progressively about the diversity of our city, and please do not be bought by developers. I noticed one comment already tonight that you could, and I'm very, very, I'm, we're watching that. An inclusionary housing program ordinance will help provide housing needs to all economic segments of the community, and in compliance with California's Fair Employment and Housing Act. The city is at a very particular moment of reckoning, if you will. In our time of diversity, equity, and inclusion, it is the moral responsibility of the city to make inclusionary housing a priority. On a related note, I just want to make one little quick comment. I also want to encourage city council to please keep a humanitarian and caring position on our unhoused residents. I saw the recent news that was being circulated about comments of our city being quote-unquote dumping ground for the homeless COVID-19 positive people, persons, and, and I felt it was very insensitive and degrading. I also want to point out, I find, I found that the cartoon character that was used in Mr. Kirk's PowerPoint highly offensive, the one that was looking at homelessness. I felt it was very elitist and classist, especially because of the cartoon characters of our unhoused communities. I implore you to bring empathy and humanity, humanity to your presentations. C-VAG needs to recognize these systemic issues. And I just want to bring that up as, as a comment, and thank you for, and have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, before we move on, I do want to go back to Item 3A and read the ordinance title, which is an urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Springs, California, amending the city's temporary moratorium on evictions for non-residential tenancies resulting from non-payment of rent when such non-payment was caused by the COVID-19 pandemic and setting forth the facts constituting such urgency. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is city council and city manager comments and reports. Does any city council member have a report at this time? Councilmember Garner and then Councilmember Coors.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I wanted to bring up that we had our, our virtual walk audits. I think all, all of our council members did those, and basically what that was, was an opportunity for residents to give feedback about pedestrian safety in our city. So if you did not get a chance to participate, you can go to our website. If you, because if you type in virtual walk audit in our, on our webpage, you should be able to find the information. And there's an opportunity to go onto a map of our city and actually mark different areas that you can, you think need extra pedestrian safety, or if you have insight into. So I really encourage people to do that. They were useful conversations I know I had, and I, I'm sure others had with, with residents, but there's lots more to say. So please take the time to do that if you can. Thank you.
Councilmember Coors.
There we go. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So some good news to report. The city, and I really want to thank Veronica Goodheart from our enforcement department, who worked with the Boys and Girls Club and applied for cannabis youth education grant from the state. The grant from the city was awarded for $1 million for a three-year program. That was the most that could be awarded. And we were ranked second out of all the applications, regardless of city size, so really a great job by our staff to make that happen. So really excited. This will create a center at the Boys and Girls Club to do education on risk for youth, middle and high school students. They'll also do this education in communities as well in the city. But very exciting that it's a million-dollar grant, and will really help educate our, educate our youth on the harms of cannabis for people who are still developing. So very excited to see that. I wanted to share that the council and the human rights commission will be holding a special meeting on May 20th, a joint meeting regarding Section 14 and actions to consider regarding Section 14 and related issues. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Mayor Protem Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to congratulate the Palm Springs Police Department LGBTQ Advisory Committee and the Palm Springs Police Department of Leadership for holding an outstanding town hall on LGBTQ issues in the police department on April 1st. My compliments to everyone that was involved, both from the advisory committee and the police department. It was a very good turnout and an extremely productive conversation.
Councilmember Wood.
I always report on things that have a long shelf life, but this is something that would music to Mayor Protem Middleton's ears. One of the issues that we've had in Palm Springs during blow, sand, and/or flooding is the closure of Indian Canyon due to these elements. We are on the first steps of trying to resolve that issue. Originally, there was a bridge proposal that was hundreds of millions of dollars that we could not afford or secure funding for. So we came up with some alternatives through Coachella Valley Association of Governments, which was laid, the foundation was laid by Mayor Protem. Thank you, Mayor Protem. And we are in the process now of hiring a consultant to look at what it's going to take to actually fund and make some of those improvements come true. It will take some time to get there, but we're working on it and moving forward. Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Just a few updates. So I held a district town hall meeting on March 29th. Those are monthly meetings that I'm doing for our District 4 in Palm Springs. Anyone is welcome to participate those, you don't have, in those, you don't have to be a District 4 resident, so we invite all of the One PS representatives and alternates, and then any HOA board members or, or residents. So please feel free to email me if you'd like to get involved in those. Just a few upcoming meetings that I want the council and the public to be aware of. I serve on Cal Cities, the League of California Cities Policy Committee for Housing and Economic Development. We are having a meeting on April 15th. That's a public meeting, people are able to attend and provide public comment. And then we also have our C-VAG, the Coachella Valley Association of Governments Homeless Committee, which I chair. We have a meeting on April 21st at 10:00 a.m. That's a public meeting, and anyone who's interested in the regional homelessness strategy, as well as our housing programs that Tom Kirk presented on last meeting, you can, you can attend that meeting and learn more about it. And I just want to flag, for the city attorney, I have a few questions. We've received a number of emails about the Marilyn Monroe statue and the process, and I know that's in active litigation, so the council has been careful about talking publicly about it because it is in active litigation. But it seems like there's a lot of misinformation in the community about what the council did and then what we are able to do at this point. So if you could just briefly explain where we are in terms of the litigation and, you know, what options are, are in front of the council due to our previous action.
Sure, absolutely, Mayor. Members of the council, members of the public, the city received word late this afternoon that the court has issued a tentative ruling on the preliminary injunction. The hearing is scheduled for tomorrow at 8:30 a.m. Tentative ruling basically indicates how the trial judge is inclined to, to rule, and we are hopeful that the judge will stick with that tentative ruling. It essentially affirms in all respects the actions that the city council and PS Resorts has, has taken. Specifically, in November, the city council directed staff to, to enter into a license agreement with PS Resorts that would allow PS Resorts to place the statue in, in Museum Way. That license agreement was entered into in early December pursuant to the council direction. And that license agreement, it's important for the public to know, can't simply be terminated by the, the city council immediately and unilaterally. Instead, there needs to be either a default by PS Resorts, or the city would have to provide advance notice of, of up to a year in order to terminate it. So it's not as simple as just locating another site for, for the statue. PS Resorts also has, has acted in reliance on that license agreement. They've gone ahead and purchased the statue, they've installed the pedestal, and so it's, it's not, again, as simple as just moving, moving the statue to another location. The city staff also went through the process of temporarily closing Museum Way, and that action as well has been affirmed by the, the trial court's tentative ruling that was issued this afternoon. And finally, I should point out, there, there've been some statements to the effect that the statue's placement in, in that location is not consistent with the city zoning documents, the city's downtown specific plan in particular. According to the judge's ruling, the specific plan does envision these types of event centers and, and public art, and so, so it, it affirms the staff's and the city council's previous determination that this location is consistent with the specific plan. So that's a broad overview. If you have any specific questions, I'm certainly happy to answer. But again, we're hopeful that the trial court tomorrow morning will, will affirm its ruling.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the city attorney? Seeing none, thank you very much for that update. The next item is the consent calendar. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar, noting that there are no items sold for separate discussion, and that there is a revision to Item 1A that was included by the city clerk. Is there a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, and I just want to note, thank you, we're appointing people to our boards and commissions, so thank you for everyone's service and commitment to the city. We very much appreciate the time that you're going to spend on these boards and commissions with us. So with that, can we have a roll call vote for the consent calendar, please?
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Coors.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Holstich. Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The next item is Item 3D, consideration of an ordinance amending the Palm Springs Municipal Code establishing responsible breeding regulations and penalties for violation of the regulations. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor and council. We're pleased to present this for your consideration. Last year, on February 27th, we introduced a similar ordinance, and at that time, based on public comments received, the ordinance was tabled. Since that time, we've worked to refine the ordinance to resolve the, the issues presented by those comments. And working with your liaison, Councilmember Garner and Friends of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter, crafted an ordinance for your consideration tonight. What this would do is establish responsible breeding regulations, essentially requiring that not more than three litters occur within a three-year period, and it does establish the same fines and violations that were presented for your consideration last year. So with that, I would turn it over if there's any other issues or comments or questions to your council member liaison, Grace Garner.
Thank you, Councilmember Garner. Do you have anything to add?
Thank you. I do want to say that this was something that we, we worked on very closely with the Kennel Club, who reached out, who were the most vocal, I think, in the, the last time we had this in front of us. So I reached out to them directly and made sure that they were at the table to discuss with the animal shelter, and we went through several revisions to get where we are now, including, you know, changing the title of the ordinance, which was something that was problematic for, for members of the community, because of course, they are responsible breeders. So this is, I, I think, you know, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure Animal Shelter Executive Director Gabrielle will, would also be available to, to ask if there's any, you know, very specific things. But overall, I think it's, it's something that is good for the animals and still good for the people who are practicing responsible breeding.
Mayor Protem Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we know, we've sat through some really long contentious discussions on this issue, and there were no public comments on either side of this issue this evening. And I did have the opportunity to reach out to some of the folks who were deeply troubled by past versions of this, and they had nothing but very high praise and compliments for Councilmember Garner for her work in bringing together two sides of, an argument where both sides really believe in the health and care of pets and animals. So I extend my compliments to those animal rights folks, the breeders, and to Councilmember Garner.
Other questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Coors?
I am muted by mistake, but I'll, I'll echo Councilmember Middleton's comments. Having sat through a couple of those meetings, really great job, Councilmember Garner and the animal shelter, and the breeding community and staff to come up with something that everyone felt good about. And I know sometimes it takes a little longer to get there, but we end up with better legislation as a result. So I really appreciate everyone's work on that and happy to support this.
Councilmember Garner.
One more thing on this, to just say that this will take a little bit of outreach, especially for folks who are not part of the Kennel Club, for instance, but that, who might have, have breeding or come into it. So the animal shelter is going to work on making sure that people understand the reasons for these types of restrictions and, and help them to get into compliance.
Thank you. That's really helpful. Thank you to Councilmember Garner for all of her work taking this on, as I was the former liaison to the animal shelter and initially brought a more restrictive ordinance in 2017, and, and had initially met with the Kennel Club and the animal shelter. So thank you for doing the really hard work of bringing the community together after we had a divisive meeting a few years ago. I do just have a few questions about enforcement, because I know that this is creating a new permit structure, and so I have questions about implementation and the administration of that. I know that one issue facing the animal shelter is that, so they get the fees for permits, for example, for a license for having a pet in Palm Springs. The problem is that a lot of people don't license their pets, in part because you have to go in person, or there's just limits to outreach and the community's understanding about that. And I see that this ordinance still shows that breeding permits can be obtained in person. So I don't know if that's a question for staff about who is going, or to Councilmember Garner, about who is going to be implementing this, if it will be city staff, or if it will be the Friends of the Animal Shelter, who will be doing this at the, at the shelter there, and sort of thoughts about implementation, so that, you know, the ordinance that we have on the books is actually followed.
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Garner.
No, I was, I was going to suggest that you speak.
Okay. So it's my understanding the Friends will take a leading role on this, and, and of course, it's like anything else, complaint-based, so I think that when we have concerns about irresponsible breeding, and those are made, were made aware of that, then we'll pursue investigations of those with our code enforcement staff.
And I know there, and I, sorry, I think a lot of these questions might be for the animal shelter, but I know that initially this was raised because, you know, there's people selling animals on Craigslist, or I've seen someone selling little puppies at the dog- animals on Craigslist, or I've seen someone selling little puppies at the dog park. So is there a sense that there might be the capacity to enforce at that level? Or is it, you know, is there thoughts about what level of staff capacity we might have on our side to enforce this?
You know, I will have to have further discussions with the Friends, and I think as we roll this out to get an understanding of, I don't want to say how big a problem it is, but as they roll out these new regulations and administer the permit program, we may, you know, need to consider how we have to add more capacity. But at this time, we didn't consider that there'd be a significant increase in workload for the code enforcement staff.
Thank you. That's helpful. So yeah, I'll just ask in passing this, that councilmember Garner and the Friends of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter and city staff work to address enforcement and even maybe better ways that we can allow people to access permits online, you know, different ways so that we do have, and focusing on outreach, so that people are aware of this ordinance. Obviously, you know, I favor more of a ban, because we do have such a problem with puppies and kittens and just too many animals in our animal shelter. But I appreciate that this is a solution that includes the AKC and the Kennel Club, which does important work, and our responsible breeders. So I appreciate the work on this, and I would just ask that we, when we implement this, we think about enforcement in a way that it really can prevent, you know, all of those litters of animals that end up in our shelter.
Councilmember Garner?
So one more thing about the licenses, for instance, for dogs and the permits, all of that is going to be moved online, which you mentioned first there. So I really appreciate that, and that is something that I think if it's not already happening, it's supposed to be happening pretty soon. So hopefully, with the educational process about this, we'll also get more people licensing their dogs, and then that'll also help us to know which dogs are fixed and which aren't, and kittens and cats as well, because it is breeding issues that happen with cats, too.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I have one more question. One thing that we talked about before is including in the ordinance a requirement that if you are selling an animal online, like on Craigslist or somewhere else, that you list your license number by the permit for the city. Is that included in this version? I didn't see it.
You know, Madam Mayor, I don't recall that that's in this ordinance.
So I would ask that it be included. Those are all my comments. Thank you.
Yeah, we can add that in a provision. It is there in section, it is there, I'm sorry. We confirmed it's section E2.
I thought I saw it somewhere.
Perfect. Thank you. With that, I have no other comments. Is there other council discussion or a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, and I don't see any further discussion. Can we roll call vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Coors.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
City clerk, would you like to read the ordinance title?
Yes, sorry about that. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Springs, California, amending chapters 10.04 and 10.24 of the Palm Springs Municipal Code, adding regulations for breeding permits. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is item 4A, discussion of progress and plans for complying with state regulations implementing Senate Bill 1383, short-lived climate pollutants, organic waste, methane emissions reduction. Can we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. This is Patrick Tellerico, the City Sustainability Manager, and I am joined by Chris Cunningham from Palm Springs Disposal Services. And tonight, I wanted to just highlight some of the elements of SB 1383, which is a new organics requirement that will apply to all cities in the state of California starting January 1st of 2022. This ordinance is, or this regulation was passed back on November 5th of 2020, about a year after the state had planned to issue it. But our deadlines still apply, so we're still working towards a January 1st, 2022 implementation date. The ordinance addresses two things, so food waste and food insecurity, as well as methane emissions from landfills. So it's designed to prevent food and food waste from entering a landfill, which then generates methane when it degrades. It is a really comprehensive and very prescriptive regulation, and so we don't have a ton of flexibility in terms of how it's implemented. And it will impact all aspects of our city. So you can see here the two timeframes that are outlined in the regulation. First is January 1st of 2022, which is when the regulations take effect, and so we have to have a variety of things in place by that January 1st deadline. And then January 1st of 2024 is really the enforcement deadline. So no later than that date can we start enforcing the ordinance and the regulations. The, here are the key elements that are included. So you can see in that January 1st, 2022 timeframe, there's a variety of things we have to have in place, including service for all residents and businesses to collect organics. We've got to have a food recovery program in place for some of our businesses in our city. And then conducting education and outreach, changing our procurement practices, and then making sure that we have capacity to send waste once it's collected. And then 2024 is, of course, the enforcement date. So residential impacts, I wanted to focus on the impacts that we are anticipating for the various sectors. So for the residential sector, if you're in a single-family home, what you are required to have right now is a blue bin and a trash bin, which is currently brown, but it will be gray. And we're going to move to a three-bin system. So everybody will have a gray bin, a blue bin, and a green bin. The green bin will be for all organics. So the green bin currently is optional, so if you've already got a green bin, then you're already on your way to compliance with this ordinance. I wanted to say that, you know, we pride ourselves on trying to be flexible and provide a variety of services to our customers and the city residents. So the size of the containers may vary for different homes and individual situations. So we're trying to work through the details of the sizing of the containers right now as we renegotiate the franchise agreement, because the different sizes have different cost implications and different service implications for various clients. And eventually, not yet, the green cart will be for both food waste and for yard waste. Currently, we only put yard waste in those containers, but in the future, we'll be adding food waste to those containers as well. Plastic bags, which are all prohibited in the recycling bins, are also going to be prohibited in the green carts. So you won't be able to bag your food waste in a plastic bag before you throw it in your cart. And then the last big thing is that contamination and compliance for this regulation will be monitored. So we will have folks from Palm Springs Disposal who would be out there flipping lids before these things are collected, so that they can notify residents of any contamination or violations that they see. For commercial businesses, so commercial businesses are in a bit of a different place. They have already been subject to state requirements that require them to have recycling and organic services if they generate a certain amount of waste. So right now, on the left-hand side, you see there, the current requirement to have organic service is if you generate a half a cubic yard or more of organic waste. So that includes any green waste as well as food waste. So that's the, those are the cardboard containers that you see a lot at the Village Fest and other places that are temporary waste bins. So three of those is basically a half a cubic yard, a little bit more. And then that threshold for compliance is going to go down to 20 gallons. So that's four or five-gallon containers or less than one of those cardboard containers. So that basically increases the universe of people that are required to comply with this, these requirements. And so it really expands our network of businesses that are impacted. So again, no plastic bags and organics carts, and this is something that has been an evolving conversation with our processors. And we have been allowing folks to put stuff in plastic bags inside their green carts if they are getting commercial service. But that is going to change going forward into the future, and so we're going to have to work with restaurants and businesses to transition away from that. Proof of service will still be required. So for example, if you're a large multifamily complex that's considered a business, you will still have to show us some proof that your gardener is taking away your green waste, if that's how you've arranged to handle it. There will be more frequent contamination monitoring and enforcement throughout this process. So again, folks from Palm Springs Disposal Services will be inspecting shipments so that they, so that our materials aren't contaminated when they get to the processing facility. We have had space waivers for a variety of facilities in the past. These space waivers will be very limited. And so if, for example, you are a large complex and you've got a number of parking spaces and you're claiming that you don't have enough space for a cart or container, we're going to work with you to figure out where you can put it. So again, very limited space waivers moving forward. Large multifamily complexes are in a little bit different category, so they are considered a business. However, they are not required to collect food waste. So we don't have to collect food waste from multifamily complexes. However, based on some early feedback that we've gotten from some neighborhoods, there may be a desire on the part of those communities to get some sort of organic service. So again, we're working with Palm Springs Disposal to figure out what our options might be here, and we're also talking about starting some community composting, so that if people live in those complexes and they'd like to take their waste to a particular location, they could do that. And then the other stuff is, again, similar to the other businesses, more frequent monitoring, limited space waivers, et cetera. So the city also has requirements under this regulation. So first of all, we need to assess compliance for city facilities, so we are under the same sorts of generation requirements, so we have to assess our operations. So really, we're looking more at event spaces, but not our public spaces. So we don't have to worry about the stuff that's collected in public trash cans, for example, downtown and at the parks. We also have new purchasing policies. So one of the requirements that we will have is, based on our population, we have to buy or donate a certain amount of reclaimed organic material. So we have to really monitor our recycled content in our paper. We also have to purchase most likely some level of mulch or our organic compost. But because our city doesn't use a lot of that material, we're going to have to look at other ways to comply with this requirement in the regulation. And then, of course, tracking and reporting. We are the responsible party for ensuring compliance with this, the state requirements, and of course, tracking the collection of those materials and the impact that we're having. There's also an edible food recovery component, and again, it's two-tiered, a two-tiered system. The first tier, we're not too worried about. The tier-one facilities are food vendors and grocery stores and supermarkets that already collect a lot of their food that is expiring and that is still usable, and we're, they typically work with Fine Food Bank to do that. And so that process is really already underway, and so we'll just work with them a little bit more to make sure we're tracking that. And then in 2024, this food recovery concept extends to tier-two facilities and extends to not just prepackaged food, but also prepared food. So this is, this will have a huge impact on our businesses here in Palm Springs, given our tourism and event-related businesses. So that's where we'll be working with large venues to figure out how they operate and how they can salvage and reuse some of that food that may be going to waste currently. This is a multi-party effort, so we've had several conversations with Fine Food Bank. We're working with Seavag on a coordinated approach on this, and of course, other desert cities are involved in this process, too. Topics that may return to you and will likely return to you in the future, first of all, is of course rate increases. All of this is going to come at a cost. There is an option that we're exploring to move people to a tax roll billing, so that they would be billed along with their property taxes. And then enforcement, of course, we're going to have to talk about how we do enforcement under this program, because Palm Springs Disposal will be kind of the lead for it and then engage us when there are violations. So it's not going to work like a typical code enforcement process. And then different-sized containers. As I mentioned, we're going to be thinking about how to best serve people and meet the needs, meet the requirements in the, in the regulation, but also provide people some flexibility. And we're going to be doing a survey that we're going to be rolling out through 1PS to kind of assess where people are in their thinking regarding green waste and food waste, so that it might help us kind of figure out the direction on the containers moving forward. Future milestones, we'll be back to talk to you several times. Really, June, July, and September are kind of key milestones to bring forward policies and also new ordinances, as well as a new franchise agreement with Palm Springs Disposal Services. So again, we will be keeping you posted along the way and letting you know if anything comes up that we need your input on. And that's it, and we're happy to answer any questions that you guys might have at this time.
Thank you, Patrick, for the staff report and the really thorough-written staff report. I really appreciated all the information in there, and I thought it was really well-done. So thank you for that. Are there any questions for city staff at this time? Councilmember Coors?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just briefly echoes a terrific staff report, and I know, so thank you, Mr. Tellerico and Mr. Cunningham for your work on that. I did speak to both of them before that, and both raised the issue of potentially having one or two council liaisons, given this is such an enormous issue and change. So I just wanted to share that with council. And also, a suggestion was made that whether at a council meeting or some video presentation from Cowley Cycle about the state requirements, these aren't city requirements, this is a state requirement, might be helpful. Despite a lot of notices have gone out to businesses, most still don't know this is happening. And this is going to have a, you know, significant impact to businesses and our residents. So I just wanted to share that. I think that might be a good thing to do at some point as well, so we can make sure we're getting the outreach. And I know they're doing outreach through 1PS and other ways, but the more outreach the better on this. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Other questions for Patrick? Councilmember Woods?
Patrick, as I understand it, every household will be getting a green waste bin. Is that correct?
So, single-family residences all will get some sort of a green bin for their, for their home. And again, it gets into a little bit of a complicated area where we talk about smaller multifamily complexes, like the four-unit complexes and things like that. So again, we're looking at maybe different-sized containers or maybe some other way to accommodate some of those, some of those needs. But yes, every, every resident must have some sort of a service.
And what happens to those people who've already bought a green waste container under the existing program? They actually had to pay for them?
So, Chris, am I wrong? Is the green waste a free service, or is it a fee-based service?
Excuse me. Good evening, honorable mayor, Holstich, councilmembers, staff. Thank you. Yeah, the, the customers right now that currently have the green waste containers, they're just used for yard waste, but they will be able to use those for organics as well. Right now, it's just a one-time cart fee. It's not a monthly fee for green waste right now. But once we get into the organics, mixed organics, food waste and yard waste, everyone will have it, and it will be will have it and it will be probably a bundled rate.
Okay, just, as we're going through this, I just want consideration given to those people who've already paid for a container versus those that are going to be getting them free under a bundled rate? If that makes sense what I said.
Absolutely, we got it.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Other questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Garner?
More of a comment, but I'm, I'm glad that there's so much planned outreach and, you know, I know we, we have our more robust Spanish language outreach that we're doing now, which is great, so we can do a lot of that as well. So I'm glad that, that we're in a, in a better place than we were from leaf blowers and being able to do that outreach because I think now it's kind of all combined into our city processes and, but this, that is going to be a large sector of the group that needs, needs that, that communication.
Thank you, Councilmember Garner. I think that's such an important point of working with affected groups. And so I would push us to think through, I know this is just an initial timeline and details, you know, continue outreach efforts, but I am really interested in what those outreach efforts will be in order to reach the most impacted communities. And so I just have a few questions for Patrick. One, how does this relate to our proposed styrofoam and plastic waste ordinance? I know that when we were talking about when to bring that forward, we wanted to have this general, larger discussion, too. So could you talk a little bit about that?
So they're connected in a couple of ways. So the first way is that they affect in a large part this, a similar business community. So the restaurants and the food businesses are going to be the ones that are primarily impacted by that foodware ordinance. So that's the first thing. And so it just adds additional items for them to think about in perhaps a similar timeframe. So that's one thing. The other thing is that we have been going back and forth and trying to make sure that we understand the array of management options for different foodware types. And one of the things that is evolving, but has not been very positive, is the compostable foodware. And so we keep getting a lot of feedback from the food, or I'm sorry, the food waste processors, that they don't want any of that compostable foodware in their system. And so we did get a little bit more feedback on a new facility that's going in up at Edom Hill later this year that may be willing to accept or will accept some limited amount of cardboard or paper-based material. But again, that's a very limited and preliminary feedback. And so, so it gets to, to a certain extent, what we allow under that ordinance, right? So a lot of cities have gone to allowing only compostable foodware instead of plastic foodware. But again, if we don't have anything to do with that foodware, then it just ends up in a landfill and it becomes organic waste that, that generates methane. So, so we want to be really conscious of, of what's accepted in our system before we start making people move to a certain set of foodware that they don't necessarily have to pay for. So, yeah. And again, it's an evolving conversation, so it's, it's a little hard to nail down.
Thank you, that's helpful. And then I have another question. So the purpose of this is to achieve a reduction in the disposal of organic waste. So it identifies a 50% reduction as you described and then a 75% reduction by 2025. Are there local metrics that are prescribed on the city about what we're trying to achieve with these measures? So I saw that, you know, our actions are sort of like you said, prescriptive by the state, change to these bins, you know, require X, Y, Z. But I'm wondering if there are metrics that we can track against, like if we are specifically required to reduce by 50% and then 75%? And then if we can kind of, in our planning and timeline here, build in those metrics so that we know that we're being successful and not just using different bin colors? Does that make sense? Focused on just the process, but not the result?
Right. Yeah, that's a really good point. And they are statewide measures. So it's the, the idea behind it is that if each of the cities does these things, then they will achieve some sort of improvement at the statewide level. The, we haven't talked much about individual, like establishing some internal goals or city goals for this process. And that's something we can talk about, not necessarily attached to the franchise agreement, but as we further define the franchise agreement and the data that's going to be collected, we can kind of look at that and try to establish some metrics based on that information that we're going to be collecting because we're going to be collecting a lot of data. So, so we can look at that and try to figure out some particular targets for ourselves. Because I do, I agree that it's important for us to be conscious of what we're achieving through this in addition to just having people do things. And I did want to say with regard to that, so there are current requirements for organics and recycling for businesses, like I mentioned before, and we passed an ordinance late last year to enforce that locally. The state has not been seeing results with that program. And that's why last year they actually reduced the threshold for compliance with that program down to the two cubic yards that I mentioned before. It was, it used to be four cubic yards. So their hope is that as you ratchet down the compliance level or the, the compliance requirements, that you get more people in the system and doing things. But that has not necessarily proven to be the case necessarily at the state level. The numbers have been going up. So, so I am, I am too, am very interested in how this actually results in progress that they are looking for. So, so we're happy to take a look and see how we can do that.
Thank you, that would be great. I completely agree with you that if we don't track our progress and actually try to achieve results on this, we might be in the same place in a few years and we are going to be affected by climate, the climate crisis first and more than others in our desert communities. So thank you for all your work on this. So this is a discussion item. So do you want to identify what direction you need from council at this time? Is it general approval about what's laid out in the staff report and the timeline of action?
Yeah, so if you guys have any concerns about anything that you saw or as, as Councilmember Coors mentioned, if there's any particular way that you want to be engaged on this moving forward, that would be appreciated, too, so that we can kind of establish that now and it doesn't slow us down moving forward.
Thank you. I think it's a great idea to appoint liaison to work on this, to work on the details with, I know the Sierra Club wrote in and had suggestions and all of the different stakeholders and city staff. So are there councilmembers who would like to participate in that if there's consensus around that issue?
I'm happy to, if no one else wants to.
I would also love to do it, but I'm open to if anyone else wants to as well. I didn't see any hands shoot up. Is there other direction that the council wants to give at this time to city staff on this item? Councilmember Wood?
Just a question about the franchise agreement. And I don't know if this could be answered, if it's premature in answering that question. We have a franchise agreement currently with Palm Springs Disposal Service. Are we looking to amend that franchise agreement or do we need to go out and bid it out again completely for this particular organic service?
No, we're looking, we're looking to revise that agreement, the current agreement. So it will be a very significant rewrite of that agreement, including new fees. So it'll be a significant change, but we are not planning on going out to bid for, for it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I don't see any. Thank you so much for your really thorough work on this. I know this is such an important issue and difficult to adapt to the prescriptive rules of the state, but I think really incredibly important to our community and we want to lead the way on sustainability. So thank you. City clerk, this is just a discussion item. Is there a vote that's needed to approve what's in the staff report?
No vote is needed. And I just want to note that I have Councilmember Coors listed as the liaison for this issue.
I think with Mayor Hostage.
Okay. So in addition to Mayor Hostage.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone for their work on this. So the next item is Item 4B, Discussion and Possible Approval of a Community Workforce Agreement by and between the City of Palm Springs and San Bernardino Riverside County Building and Construction Trades Council and the Signatory Craft Councils and Unions. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, Mayor and members of the city council, the item before you is a proposed community workforce agreement. As a reminder, a community workforce agreement is a type of project labor agreement. Project labor agreement is a pre-hire collective bargaining agreement with one or more labor organizations that establishes the terms and conditions of employment for construction projects, either specific projects or a class of projects. A community workforce agreement is a specific type of project labor agreement, and it includes some targeted hiring provisions designed to create local jobs or achieve other social welfare, welfare goals such as construction projects that they apply to. These can include hiring of low-income individuals, veterans, former offenders, residents of low-income neighborhoods, at-risk youth, and for projects with federal funds, percentage goals for racial minorities and women. The city council received a report in February of 2020 regarding project labor agreements and community workforce agreements, and it gave direction to the city staff and city attorney's office to negotiate with the trades council and signatory craft councils. We've engaged in those negotiations over the last several months. In November of 2020, we brought to the city council a proposed community workforce agreement. However, because the agenda was full that evening, the city council did not get a chance to take up the item. However, as a result of it being on the agenda, the city did receive a number of, of comments from various stakeholders and that created some more conversations that city staff and the city attorney's office had with the trades council. In addition, the business retention liaisons have also been very involved in, in assisting those, those discussions that we've been having with the trades council. The, the proposed community workforce agreement that is before you tonight, it includes several terms that I will go over, but it also has about five remaining business deal points that we have not been able to reach agreement with the trades council. And so as a result, the city staff and the city attorney's office would like to seek direction from the city council on those five remaining deal points. I'll go over those in turn. Generally, the community workforce agreement provides that it will apply to city public works projects of a million dollars or more. That's kind of the scope of, of the types of city projects that the agreement and its terms will, will apply to. The agreement is a five-year agreement, so the term is for five years. The goal is to have 30% of the total work hours performed on city public works projects of this size, subject to the CWA, to be local residents, and that's identified by local Coachella Valley zip codes. The staff report references that that 30% can be also filled with veterans as a result of the November meeting and the subsequent discussions. That qualification has actually been removed. And so the, the 30% goal is, is local, local workers. In addition to that 30% goal, the community workforce agreement provides for goals of placing disadvantaged and at-risk youth, low-income and underemployed residents, women, minorities, LGBTQ plus members, and veterans into the workforce. It also specifies certain apprenticeship programs and community outreach programs that the trades council will be providing. In addition, the agreement provides that the city will designate a community workforce administrator. This would be either a city staff person or a contract employee that would help serve as a liaison between the city and the contractors on the various projects and kind of help monitor compliance with the CWA and, and establish communications. One of the other benefits of the community workforce agreement is provisions dealing with no work stoppage and lockouts. And so the, the contractors that sign on to these city projects would, would receive the benefit of no stop, work stoppages. As I indicated, there are about five kind of business deal points that remain to be decided upon between the, the parties. I'll outline those first and then go into the detail of those. The first is an exemption from the applicability of the community workforce agreement to local contractors. The second is a provision allowing the city to terminate the community workforce agreement without cause. The third is an opportunity for the city to rebid a project without the community workforce agreement if the city does not receive an adequate number of responsive bids or if the bids received exceed the city's cost estimate. The fourth provision is a provision that provides for the payment of amounts in lieu of health and welfare benefits to non-union workers who are on projects that are subject to the community workforce agreement. And then the fifth is a provision that protects the city from being liable for, for monetary damages. With regard to the first item, the exemption from the applicability of the community workforce agreement, as a result of the November 12, 2020 meeting, we received several comments, including some from local contractors who essentially asserted that they are local contractors, they have local workers, they have local offices. And since one of the primary benefits of the community workforce agreement is, is hiring and engaging those local contractors and workers, that if they are local, they should not be subject to the other terms and provisions of the community workforce agreement. And so my office has drafted some language and that's actually based on a community workforce agreement or a project labor agreement that was entered into in another jurisdiction. The trades council is, has indicated that they, they couldn't agree to that, that provision. And they've, they've indicated that in addition to the, the benefits of hiring local contractors and workers, the community workforce achieves other community goals such as the hiring of, of union workers and, and the, the benefits that arise from, from the hiring of union workers. And so the trades council essentially asserts that by exempting local contractors and local workers, the city and its community would not receive those other benefits of the community workforce agreement. The second, the second of the five kind of deal points is a termination without cause provision. Most agreements that the city, as well as other, other municipalities enter into, other than perhaps construction projects, most agreements provide for the ability of the public agency to terminate the relationship without cause. And this really is, is meant to enable this, the city to determine whether a particular contractual relationship is, is working for the city and its community without incurring liability. We haven't actually been able to find any other community workforce agreement that provides for such a termination without cause provision. Nevertheless, the city attorney's office and city staff believe that it would be prudent for the city council to consider a provision that would allow the city to terminate with, without cause. The city doesn't have any experience in entering into community workforce agreements or project labor agreements. We're not sure what the cost to administer it will be, what the direct cost in terms of hiring the administrator would be or the, kind of the unintended costs of increased project costs. And so as a, as a way to mitigate that risk, we're proposing the city council consider a termination without cause provision. The trades council has countered that, that they are investing time and, and effort, presumably money, in the relationship. And so therefore, they, they believe that it would be unfair to them to allow the city to terminate without cause. And so again, this is something that we'd, we'd like the city council to consider. Another alternative, as identified in the staff report, if the city council doesn't want to include a termination without cause provision is, is simply a shorter term, so maybe two years or three years, to test, test out the relationship and, and see whether the, the city and the community receive the benefits that it would, would have expected. The third provision is sort of a, it was kind of an alternative to the termination without cause provision, and that is a clause that provides- cause provision, and that is a clause that provides the city with the opportunity to rebid a project without subjecting that rebid project to the community workforce agreement if we didn't receive enough responsive bids, or if the bids came in a certain percentage higher than the engineer's estimate. Again, this would kind of reduce the risk that is otherwise present to the city in entering into this type of community workforce agreement that we don't have any background or history with. And if those circumstances arise, we could simply rebid the project, and the rebid project would not be subject to the community workforce agreement. The language is actually drafted based on a provision in a project labor agreement from a few years ago, down with Sweetwater Union High School in the San Diego County region. Again, the trades council has indicated that they are not in agreement with this provision, that they believe that the experience that they've had with the nearby cities of Paris, California, and Moreno Valley indicate that there really isn't a significant risk to the city of having projects come in significantly over the engineer's estimate, or not receive any bids from responsible bidders. So we're presenting this item for the council to consider as well. The fourth item is a significant policy issue, and this has to do with payment of benefits or an in-lie payment of those benefits to non-union workers. The proposed community workforce agreement that the trades council has shared with the city council provides that even non-union workers who are employed on projects would essentially be required to pay the value of their health and welfare benefits that they'd be receiving if they were union workers to the union trust funds, essentially the trusts that provide for defined benefit plans for those union workers. As a result of the November 12 meeting, there were a number of comments raised from stakeholders that this was perhaps unfair to the non-union workers, that they were essentially having to pay over what would otherwise perhaps be salary or benefits that they would receive into a union trust that they may never see the benefits of. And so city staff, some of the business retention liaisons, went out and looked for alternatives to this and found some language that has been used up in Santa Barbara County that would basically provide that if you are a non-union worker, that the amount of benefits would be paid to you by your employer, the contractor/employer, either as salary or as some other form of benefit. So they would be going to the non-union worker as opposed to the union's benefits plan. The trades council has countered that this is not an advisable policy decision, that essentially that is disincentivizing the use of union workers and the benefits that are available to union workers, and that perhaps non-union workers might improvidently spend those additional salary amounts if they receive them as opposed to health and welfare benefits. This, again, was a source of significant comments at the November meeting, and I think you've received a number of comments since then that identified this as kind of a sticking point. And so since we were not able to reach agreement, we wanted to bring this back to the city council, for the council to consider. And then finally, there was a concern by staff and the city attorney's office that, again, because we don't have experience with these community workforce agreements, that there could be monetary liability that the city could incur as a result of inadvertent administration of the contract. And so I propose some language that I have seen in statutory development agreements in the land use context, that essentially provides that the city, while it could be subject to lawsuit, would not be subject to any monetary damages in the event of a perhaps inadvertent default under the agreement by the city. So if that were to occur, this language would provide that the trades council or other parties would be able to bring a lawsuit and get a court to issue perhaps declaratory relief or injunctive relief, tell the parties what to do, but not issue monetary damages against the city. That language was provided to the trades council. They apparently ran it by their attorneys, and they were not in agreement with that provision. And so, again, city attorney's office, city staff believes that it would be prudent to have this provision. We haven't seen it in any other community workforce agreements, but we don't see that as an obstacle for us being the first city to have this type of language. So we would recommend it. Obviously, the trades council is not in agreement, so we'd like council direction in terms of whether that type of provision, or perhaps a reciprocal provision, providing for no monetary liability by either parties, would be acceptable to the city. Finally, I think it is important to mention the fiscal impact of community workforce agreements. This was discussed at length in the February 2020 staff report, but just very briefly, these community workforce agreements, they do have direct and indirect costs to the city. The direct costs are obviously hiring the administrator that administers the program, and then the indirect costs are the costs that are usually associated with bringing on the union labor. And as the staff report indicates, those indirect costs can range anywhere from 7% to 20% of the project cost. So as the February 2020 staff report indicates, there's kind of conflicting evidence, but it's generally understood that there's typically a slight increase in the cost of doing the projects. We do have representatives from the trades council available. I believe they're on Zoom, and so if Ms. Karens can add them in to the meeting room, we've got Bill Perez and Jimmy Elrod, I believe, who are available, who might be able to present their position on these various matters. I should point out that we shared the draft staff report with them. Prior to the staff report going out, they did provide some input, and so that was very helpful. And we've also invited them to share their thoughts directly, so the council and the public can hear their positions on these directly. So that concludes my staff presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, city attorney. So yes, if we could add the trades council leaders here into the Zoom room with us, and so we can all discuss this here together. So in terms of efficiency and getting through all of these items, my thought are that we give some, a bit of a time to just respond very briefly to, in general, and then if we can, maybe go item by item for those five outstanding issues. And then council members can ask both staff and the trades council representatives questions, issue by issue, if that works with council. Does that work? So Bill Perez or Jimmy Elrod, welcome to our Zoom meeting here and our public meeting. We appreciate all of your work on this. Just to give some context, it's probably been a year and a half now that we had your members come to city council and share their, you know, issues in not being able to obtain work even for city projects in our own communities, and having to drive, you know, six hours or longer for work. And so we've been working on a community workforce agreement, and just for the council knows and the public about the process, that though council member Corz and I were the liaison, and we're in liaisons, and we're in some initial conversations, really what's happened is city staff and the trades council have engaged in these negotiations about all of these items, so getting to a workable document. So you can see that for the council, attached, that a lot of work, on both sides, has gone into this, many, many months, over a year's worth of work and negotiations. And so I want to applaud you all for all of your really hard work on this. This isn't easy. I think we all care about the same thing, and so we're talking about how to kind of come to agreement on these issues. So just for the city council to know. And then the remaining issues, we can talk about now and see what we can do here and hear from all the parties. So for the trades council representatives, if you want to take it away and do a brief, you know, summary about where we've come and where you are now, and then we can go issue by issue altogether.
Thank you, Mayor Holstich. Council members, thank you for allowing us to participate at this level tonight, and for everybody being very patient and diligent in trying to get to a good document over the past year, year or more or so. It has been a bit of a journey. All these agreements are a bit of a journey. I've never had a quick one. Because we worked very hard to get comprehensive agreements, we worked very hard to make sure that there's an element of fairness and equality, and to be honest with you, standardization. Because there are a number of these agreements throughout the Illinois Empire, LA and Orange County especially, and what we've found is that the more consistent you are in the application and the language in these things, the less chance there is for any confusion, especially by contractors and their employees who have worked under these bargaining agreements. So that is part of our aim. There is not one cookie cutter agreement. There's local flavor built into each one through negotiations and added language, and I think we've come very, very far. I don't know, I do remember that the council liaisons, Mayor Holstich and Jeff Corz, and staff, had had a Zoom meeting with myself and Jimmy from The Carpenters back February 24th, and we had discussed these five remaining issues. In fact, we discussed all of the issues, and we were able to come back and satisfactorily add substantive language on the balance of these issues. And at that meeting, I was asked to, if I could, somewhat respond in writing to the building trades position for those remaining issues. So I trust that all of you have had a chance to see the building trades' response to those issues. So I won't read through them, because I tried to be concise, so it's just a little over a page long. With that, then, I think I'll just wait for questions.
Thank you. Mr. Elrod, do you have anything to add before we go issue by issue?
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. Thanks for affording us the opportunity to provide feedback tonight. I just also wanted to state, it's been a great pleasure working with the city staff and electeds. Like you had stated, it's been a good year and a half, and one that I have great memories of working with the city there. So I just wanted to extend that and let you know that I greatly appreciate the staff throughout the course of this. It's been a real pleasure. Look forward to answering any questions you might have.
Thank you. So if we can go issue by issue, I hope this works with the city attorney there in Chambers. So the first issue is exemption from applicability of the CWA for local contractors. So I know that the city staff went over the staff report and the position there. Do council members have questions, either for city staff or for the trades council representatives? Go ahead. Mayor Porter Middleton.
Comments, I don't have questions at this point.
Oh, okay. I have a lot of questions about all of these. I'd actually really like to understand the reasons for the trade council to not be in agreement with the city staff's recommendations, specifically with the local worker exemptions. This is a really small request. It's just for Palm Springs. We have other people in the valley who would not even be included in this exemption. So if you can just give us a little more information as to why this isn't an acceptable agreement.
That's the local contractor exemption?
Yes.
Refer to, yeah, certainly. And I think I alluded to it in my response, is that as important as the local hire issue is, and that was some of the reason they gave for saying a local contractor obviously would most likely have a majority of local employees, and that they would suffer, wouldn't need a top agreement like this. However, you know, when we negotiate these agreements, we don't necessarily negotiate these agreements in a vacuum. We know that there's all types of contractors from all jurisdictions and all geographic areas. So we put in language that's going to cover everybody for the benefits of all the employees that are working on covered projects. So the local hire is important. Some of the benefits of the community, it's not exclusive to that. It's the veterans, women, LGBTQ+, they're no longer recognized for career development by a contractor who's exempted. Pre-apprenticeship, we have no method of utilizing that amount of hours that the exempted contractors may be working on city projects. To be able to use apprentices that we may want to fill in from the pre-apprenticeship or apprenticeship readiness programs. If they're exempted from the agreement, they're exempted from a lot of the standardization that is negotiated in these agreements. Workdays, hours, work weeks, meal time and breaks, you can go down the whole list of other benefits that are contained throughout the terminology of this agreement. Those contractors would not be subject to any of those issues either. So they'd be free to carry on on a project where everybody else is working under a standardized set of conditions, and free to work under any conditions that they showed. So that's generally the basis of why we have PLAs, and keep in mind that the threshold is a million dollars or more. So I heard statements earlier from one of the callers, or a couple of callers, that you basically are discriminating against all non-union employees for all city projects, which is pretty far from the truth. Just a cursory look at the amount of projects that the city puts out, I would say by far, those projects are, the majority of those projects are under a million dollars, and they're not going to have these requirements. We'd be happy to adjust the threshold downward, but we thought, in all fairness, because this is Palm Springs' first agreement, that we would not try to roll in as many projects as we could under a lower threshold. But this would actually act as somewhat of a starting point with a higher threshold. So it just makes sense to us, if we're going to have standardization, and we're going to have benefits across the board, that we would not be interested in having an exemption. I can tell you, there's never been an exemption, local contractor exemption, proposed in any agreements I've done in the last 14 years, and there is none that I'm aware of in any community workforce agreements or project labor agreements.
So I'm still confused, because a lot of the things that you list, like breaks and et cetera, those are the law, whether it's the state and federal laws. So they are still getting those whether or not they're in the union. I understand that the unions might offer additional benefits or other perks, but it's not as if you don't work for a union, you're suddenly, you know, not ever getting a break. You still get those things. So I'm still a little bit confused as to what it is that you are specifically bringing that is just not at all on the table for a non-union worker.
Sure. And you're correct. State law for minimum wage, the laws do require the rest and meal periods. However, under this agreement, the general contractor, or the construction manager in that case, could schedule standardized break times, reporting places on the job to begin work, lunch break times, and everybody would have to agree to those conditions. So to have one or two or a handful of contractors working on a project under a different set of conditions could create differences, and we're trying to mitigate that.
If I may, just to add on to the long list of benefits, it seems as though you're seeking some clarification for the additional benefits, right, that would be provided by this. And so, you know, on the city staff, there was one example given, and that would be actually somewhat incorrect, and that was the somewhat incorrect, and that was the utilization of union workers on public works projects. But I just wanted to point out also, you know, timely completion of projects because there wouldn't be any labor disputes on covered projects. So there's one factor. Also, the projects are going to be built better and on time, on schedule, and on budget with a skilled and trained workforce. Also, you know, the creation of additional community wealth with all of the local hire provisions within the agreement that would create more local job creation for your residents, the people that voted you into office. And then also the labor compliance side of it. With the community workforce agreement, there's additional labor compliance. I know you had stated that there's already existing laws, but there's no denying the fact that there is an abundance of tax fraud, there's an abundance of misclassification of workers, there's a lot of, you know, just shady business practices conducted
Excuse me?
... within the construction industry. And we actually submitted a lot of information over to the city staff
If you could please pause your comments. Mayor Holstich's power went out, so she's coming to City Hall. So if we could take a 15-minute recess while she relocates. The time is 8:07, so we'll take a 15-minute recess.
Okay, we will come back from recess. I apologize for the technical difficulties, but we are back from recess and we are continuing on in this item. So I know I missed the last probably five minutes or so. So whoever, Councilmember Garner, were you still asking your question?
I was, but Mr. Elrod was answering.
Thank you.
And I got to say, your office looks great. I agree. So yeah, I think ultimately Councilmember Garner was looking for a little bit more of a list, so to speak, of benefits that would come about as a result of having the CWM place, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, you know, and I'll just go over everything that I had already stated, just for clarity. But, you know, the timely completion of the projects covered by the CWA. Without a CWA, there's nothing to prohibit or, yeah, prohibit labor strikes or labor disputes that could slow down the project. And then also, the projects are going to ultimately be better, safer by utilizing skilled and trained workforce that has gone through a state accredited apprenticeship program. Also, the local hire, which was already talked about, and then the additional labor compliance that would be afforded by the CWA. You know, I was talking about how the construction industry is plagued by, you know, tax fraud, wage theft, misclassification of workers. Just because it's a prevailing wage project doesn't necessarily mean that those workers actually get everything that's due to them. And so, you know, that would also be another check off the list, so to speak, of benefits that would be that would be granted by this. Hopefully, that sufficiently answers your question.
I still have more questions. Thank you. You mentioned a labor strike. I've definitely participated in labor strikes through the union. So why would your project suddenly not have a labor strike?
Is that for me?
For either of you. I mean, I just don't understand if, how is that a guarantee when we know that union jobs often strike for great reasons? So why is that any different?
Well, the language in the Community Workforce Agreement prohibits strikes and lockouts.
So it prohibits strikes and lockouts?
Prohibits, strictly prohibits strikes and lockouts.
Doesn't that go against the very essence of what unions do?
No, here's why. Is, you know, the, you know, the master labor agreements, which is locally bargain collective bargaining agreements between specific crafts and their employers and employer associations, all have different standards. Some have strike clauses, some don't. The value of a project labor agreement is that the parties to the master labor agreements have agreed to a number of concessions in order to secure these agreements. And one of those is, the big piece of it is peaceful resolution of all disputes, whether that's labor disputes, strikes, jurisdiction. The language is specific in this agreement that there will be no strikes and lockouts. In fact, there's very strong enforcement language that applies to that as well. So that's a great point, because if you had an exemption for a contractor, the rest of the contractors are bound to a no-strike-no-lockout provision. That contractor would not be. That would create some real labor strife on a project. So, strikes can happen for a number of reasons. Typically, and so can lockouts. You understand what the lockout is. That's where the employer, where they've come to impasse on their collective bargaining agreements, for instance. They no longer have a contract, the union can take a strike vote, then the contractor can also lock out the employees and shut down a job. So it works for both parties. So this agreement, and all PLAs and CWAs have a no-strike-no-lockout language. What that does, that adds another level of certainty to the schedule, which also adds another level of cost certainty, where you eliminate that risk of jobs being shut down through strikes and lockouts. It can be jurisdictional, could be over collective bargaining agreements that have terminated. In fact, it would even apply if a group of workers got frisky and decided they were going to mount a wildcat strike. Unions would still step in, take action against those workers or members, and keep the job moving. So jobs will not stop. For instance, if you did, and we had, instance, about six years ago, one of our large unions came to impasse on negotiations, and they took a strike vote. And they actually had more jobs where the contractors locked the workers out than they had jobs that they were striking, until they could get back and resolve their differences at the bargaining table. So that's the security you get. If you have contractors on the job that are exempted from that, now you have a real problem, because everybody else is bound to a contract that requires that they man the work, that the contractors keep the work going, except for the exempted. That's another big reason you could have labor strife. And we've avoided that entirely by having the no-lockout and no-strike rules.
Also, worth noting, I was just gonna say, worth noting, and I don't know if you have the copy of the agreement in front of you, Councilmember Garner, but if you were to just reference Article 8, work assignments and jurisdictional disputes, there's a mechanism within that part that would ensure what we're talking about. Also, Article 10, settlement of grievances and disputes, that's another mechanism. And then, the pre-job conference, that's another mechanism built into this agreement that would ensure labor harmony, so to speak, amongst all of the craft workers and contractors performing work on said projects. Correct, Bill?
Yeah, there's another point to be made there, too, is that the language that was proposed, and this agreement, doesn't differentiate between union and non-union contractors. So if you had a union contractor who gained an exemption by being a local contractor, that contractor and their employees would not be bound to the no-strike-no-lockout provisions. Keep in mind, when I talked about standardization of start times, work weeks, breaks, shift differentials, there's a whole number of things that are listed in the agreement. Keep in mind that there's 29 construction locals that have 29 master labor agreements, and they may have different start times for shifts, they may have different reporting periods, they may have in their agreements, for instance, they will actually list that lunch has to be taken four hours after start time. They may have various start times in their collective bargaining agreements. Under this agreement, we can standardize all those, and even the signatory contractors and the union members that work for them are still bound to the same standards. So it brings, peaceful resolution of disputes, too, is a big one. If you exempt certain contractors, they have nothing binding them from any peaceful resolution of disputes.
If I can interject really quickly, I know we proposed, or I proposed, going issue by issue, but I think in the interest of time, we should just go council member by council member, and then we can deliberate at the end. Just so, Councilmember Garner, you can get all of your questions, and we don't have to, you know, go through that process five times. So, Councilmember Garner, feel free to ask all of your questions and comments now.
Thanks. So, one of the big things that's supposed to come from this CWA is the diversity aspect, right? LGBTQ workers, trans, et cetera. Can you give us numbers on how that's doing, how that's going for your other projects? I don't want estimates, I actually want the numbers.
I don't have those numbers for you in front of me.
Okay. Do you have, is there an estimate, then?
Well, the problem is, typically, the PLA administrator would be charged with the responsibility of tracking local hire, apprenticeship utilization, and all those, all those numbers. In some areas, in the City of Paris, they have not hired a PLA administrator. They're administering it in-house for the time being. Even at Riverside Community College and San Bernardino Community College districts, where we have had long, successful agreements, they track local hire, they track local business, they track the apprenticeship. They have not tracked those specific areas that you just referred to.
Okay.
So I think mostly those classes, or the classes that we are aiming to do outreach into the apprenticeship readiness programs, and to get out of the community and talk about what construction careers are, and explain what registered apprenticeship is, and how to access those opportunities. That was the, I think, the emphasis behind that.
If I may, real quick, you know, maybe this would help a little bit, but in other areas, such as LA, I know that they do actually track that information as to, you know, the diversify, diversification of the workforce. So that should be information that is accessible. You know, there's a number of firms that act in the role of administrators on community workforce agreements, project labor agreements. There's, there's a whole array of them in Los Angeles County, within the city of LA, the airport, that would probably have good, comprehensive information that would probably satisfy your question a little bit more sufficiently.
Okay, thank you. If we're gonna do a project like this, then I want us to have an outcome that we're looking for. And it's not clear to me that we have those numbers, so it's kind of hard for me to be putting my support behind something when we don't have those numbers. And that's kind of a lot of my questions. So, what happens in terms of dues? So say you do a project, you hire somebody local here in Palm Springs, they're not part of the union, but they're obviously a skilled worker, working for you, they're then paying these dues, what happens next?
Okay, good question. If you have the agreement in front of you, Article 3.11 is what's typically referred to as the Union Security Clause. This is referring to dues, and very specifically says that employers are not required to become or remain union members as a condition of performing covered work under this agreement. An employer shall make and transmit deductions for dues, fees, assessments. That's the dues checkoff portion. This is actually, because I did see some concern in the staff report, and maybe a bit of confusion over who's required to get union membership and who's not required to get union membership. Under a public work, project labor agreement, it would be illegal for us to assess dues and fees to a core worker. So, in fact, we just were given notification yesterday from our national office that the required language now, in this respect, in order for this agreement to be approved by our national office, and I would ask if we could consider adding this language, because I'll need to get it approved, will go on to say, nothing in this agreement requires employees to join a union, or pay dues, or fees to a union as a condition of working under covered projects. So it's clear that, under federal law, nobody can be required to join or support a union. Nobody can be required not to join or support a union as well, in the National Labor Relations Act. Under public project labor agreements, you cannot compel any employee to become or remain a member as a condition of employment. So it's very clearly spelled out, and I think there was, there was a comment in the staff report that even specified that core workers would have to become union members to access the benefits. That's patently false. There's nothing in this agreement that would give anybody that idea, that I can find. It is simply not true, and it would be unlawful to require that.
So then, I think we're talking about 5.2 benefits, saying that contractors shall pay contributions to the established employee benefit funds in the amounts designated. So can you speak on that, then? When, where do they, where do the non-union workers see those benefits that they're paying contributions to?
Let me make sure we understand. If the employees don't make, I think in the staff, or in the city attorney's comments earlier, made it appear as though the employees make contributions. They're not. They're employer contributions on behalf of their covered employees working on covered projects. Staff report also made mention that it was based on the amount of days worked, which it's not, it's based on the amount of hours worked. There is no requirement that there be a union member to access those fringe benefits. Like anything else, in order to qualify, and this is, this is fair to everybody, all employees who have contributions made on their behalf, into a qualified trust fund, is that there is a requirement under health and welfare plans that they work a specific amount of hours in order to qualify for initial coverage. As an example, it takes 130 hours a month in the IBW to get a month's worth of health and welfare coverage, medical, medical dental vision, the entire package. So a new employee coming in, whether it's a new apprentice, brand-new apprentice, or anybody else coming in, would then have the 130 hours contributions in the first month, second month they get to 130, beginning of the third month, they would qualify for all the benefits, regardless of whether they're a core employee or a new employee coming into apprenticeship. So those rules are specific. And keep in mind that these are negotiated, these trust funds are negotiated through, through the negotiations in the national labor agreements, between the unions and the contractors, or contractors' associations. They're not, I know they're commonly referred to as union benefits, but let's keep in mind that we have partnerships with all the contractors at the AGC, SCCA, IBW, NICA, SMACNA. These aren't just union demands, these are negotiated between parties as well. Those established trust funds, those trust funds then are required to draft a plan document, and then there's subsequent summary plan description, and they are bound by federal law to stick to those conditions. Now, these are, have very, very, very strict oversight by the IRS, Department of Labor, they come under ERISA oversight. I sat as a pension and health and welfare trustee for 12 years with the IBW, and I can tell you, some of the trustees were worried about homesteading their homes, just to make sure that if something happened to that trust fund, they wouldn't lose everything they had because of a mistake of somebody in that trust fund. So there, it's a great amount of oversight in these plans. They're not willy-nilly, and I think there's even a reference in one of the documents about Union Hall, Union Hall trust funds, or Union Hall pension funds. Union Halls don't have pension funds or trust funds. These are collectively bargain agreements, collectively bargain trusts. The trustees oversee the operation of those trusts. So those employees, under health and welfare, would qualify that way. There was mention about the vesting period, anywhere from five to 10 years. That's not true either. In fact, federal law, some number of years ago, reduced to a maximum of five years, the vesting term for any defined benefit pension plans. We're also assuming that all the unions in their collectively bargained benefit plans have defined benefit pension plans. They all don't. There, some have a combination of defined benefit, some have money purchase plans, which is defined contribution plan, which is immediate vesting, and that's a money purchase plan in the name of the individual employee. Some have 401K options. So there's a lot of different benefit plans out there, and they're not the same across all the crafts. So broad statements are sometimes a little bit confusing, because I guess the bottom line is that these employees are most likely, even though there's sort of an argument trying to make it sound as though we're being unfair to employees in the non-union sector, the real, the reality of it is, the vast majority, and we've seen studies that show somewhere around 12% of them have no employer-paid benefits. In fact, in the Riverside Community College District PLA that was negotiated in 2010, we had the dual benefit language in there. And I had to fight like heck to get our crafts to come along with us on this, because we thought it was important. You know what the outcome was? 217 non-union contractors worked on the projects in those five years. 192 union contractors worked on those projects in those five years. So the non-union contractors worked on those PLAs at a rate of 54%. Out of those 217 non-union contractors, there was one request by one non-union contractor for an exemption on the benefits, and that contractor received only a partial exemption. He got the health and welfare, but not the pension amount. So what it showed was, it's really, in reality, has turned out not to be as big a problem as they make it out to be.
Okay. I'm having a really hard time following along with, with these statements, and it's very conflicting in what we're getting from our staff as well. And I really appreciate our staff and their analysis on things. So this is not great. Because, because basically what I'm hearing is that the staff got it wrong. Which, but again, the staff report was shared with all of you, so I don't understand kind of why we're arguing about it, or did not even arguing, but discussing it now, when this was something that should have been resolved earlier. The other part about this is...
Is, could I comment on that very quickly?
Sure.
I didn't mean to interrupt. Thank you, Councilmember. Our hope and our wish is that we will successfully have a CWA in Palm Springs. We intend to work in partnership with the council, and most importantly, on the day-to-day workings would be with staff. So I don't intend to throw staff under the bus. I wouldn't even want to do that, because we have to have a good relationship to make this, make this successful going forward. So if there are conflicting opinions, I don't lay any nefarious blame on anybody for that. So I just want to make sure I pointed that out.
Sure. No, I appreciate that. I'm just, you know, and when we're talking about this, it's not really opinion. It's, what does the document actually say? So that's where my concern is. This isn't just a disagreement... This isn't just a disagreement, there's the disagreement or there's the question of whether or not we should move forward with this, but then there's what the document actually says. And that's where my concern is, is that we're getting two different versions of what the document actually says. In terms of the rebidding without the CWA, again, if you can just give a little bit more because what I'm understanding from staff is they want the option that, hey, if things don't go well with bidding initially with the CWA, obviously, they're going to need to do something, and they want to, you know, another option. If the CWA is going to work the way that you're saying it should work, then I would imagine that we wouldn't need to rebid very often. So I'm kind of curious why that's not an acceptable allowance.
Sure. That's a, that's a common concern, and it's valid. The way we look at this thing is, the proposal is, on any project that didn't have three responsible bidders at a minimum, or a bid that came in, the low bid would come in exceeding 10% of the engineer's estimate, for either one of those reasons, the entire project could be thrown out and put out for a rebid without the conditions of the community workforce agreement. Problem with that is this: how can you tell it was because of the project labor agreement or this community workforce agreement? In fact, there are so many conditions that drive pricing, and many conditions that drive the amount of bidders that bid on a project that are out of everybody's control. Market controls a lot of those, the amount of bids, the type of project, the general contractor they may be bidding to. In fact, I think staff, at the bottom of page eight, summarized this for us, the final paragraph there. While it's difficult, it's difficult to quantify and validate the full impact the CWA may have on construction bids, since there are several factors that drive bid amounts, to include the economy, complexity of the project, availability of qualified contractors, over or under, saturation of work available, et cetera. By entering into a CWA, there will be direct economic benefits to the community, and on. So they've actually pointed out a number of reasons why bids can vary under a CWA exactly as they do on projects without a CWA. There's no difference. In fact, I think if you have a chance to look at the comparison, because it was mentioned that the most recent PLAs passed here were citywide PLAs, well, the city of Paris and city of Marina Valley. We checked Marina Valley, Marina Valley hasn't bid a CWA project under, CWA-covered project because we just finalized all the signatures in October. But for Paris, we've had just over a year's experience, and I was concerned to see how we were doing there. So I pulled all the projects that have been awarded for the past, I think it was 13 months in the city of Paris, CWA projects and non-CWA projects. Keep in mind, they have a million-dollar threshold there as well. The results was, on the three big projects, the Nuova Road, Morgan Park, and Gatz Road Widening, respectively, the first job had seven bids, the low bid, the engineer's estimate was 10.2 million, the low bid came in at 8.649 million, well under the engineer's estimate. And I thought, you know, as we always do when we see bids, did the low bidder just make a mistake? And man, he just threw in a really crappy little bid. So I went even further to realize that seven bids out of those, I'm sorry, three bids out of the seven bids actually came in below the engineer's estimate, very competitive bids. Morgan Park Phase Two, the engineer's estimate was $3.47 million. Seven bids came in, three bids, three of those bids were under the engineer's estimate as well. The low bid came in at $3.3 million. Gatz Road Widening Improvement, engineer's estimate, $6.6 million. Eight bids were submitted by below the estimate, engineer's estimate, the lowest bid came in at $6.144 million. There was one small bid, it was, estimated value was 150,000, it was just a clearing and grubbing portion of a larger project that was covered by the agreement, that received two bids. The low bid wound up at 158,500, which was 5.6% over the estimated bid. What was interesting is that the, their staff report came in making an issue about that project only having two bidders, and that could explain why it was slightly over the engineer's estimate. I thought, well, that's fair assumptions, let's look at the rest of the non-PLA-covered bids, which we did. Copper Creek Park, engineer's estimate, $48,103. Lowest awarded bid, 40% over engineer's estimate.
Okay, so I'm not, thank you, I appreciate that. I just, I'm not really asking whether or not your, the bids are going to be low, it's more just this opportunity, that's why I'm saying is, it sounds like we wouldn't be rebidding very often, which is why I'm asking, why is it a problem that staff wants to include that option if it seems very clear that most of the time we wouldn't rebid?
What's not clear is, even if you have a bid that had less than the three qualified bidders or exceeded the engineer's estimate by 10%, that it was because of and caused by the existence of a community workforce agreement. And that's the reason I submitted this, so we could, we could see in real time that that's not necessarily, you get bids, you get low numbers of bidders and you get high bids on non-CWA-covered projects as well. So the matrix for throwing out a bid and bidding it without a CWA should not be the existence of a CWA since there's so many other factors to consider.
Okay, thank you. The other question I have is, how is, how are the, how's the trade council going to ensure that we do get an increase in women and veterans and, you know, all of the categories that were listed, LGBTQ? What is that guarantee? And then what is the guarantee in terms of making sure that we get those apprenticeships? One thing that I know is that I've heard from lots of non-union workers in the area that have apprenticeship programs. So, you know, what is, how is it that you're, what is it that you're doing that's different? And how are you going to increase the skilled labor in Palm Springs?
Yeah, good question, too. I think because of the commitments we've made as partners in this, a lot of it's going to be in helping the city, and there was a number of areas that were provided by the city, and then we came up with some other ones, in order to do outreach into the community that may not be areas that have really had enough information about the opportunities in apprenticeship and construction. We're also already putting together agreements with the community college down there to begin with, to put our MC3 curriculum, multi-craft core curriculum, which is a curriculum for the pre-apprenticeship program, to prepare young people to go into, successfully enter into apprenticeship programs and succeed. So, you know, it's, the guarantee is that we will work to meet those ends. We don't put percentages on these, it would be impossible to quantify that. And, you know, our commitment is to work with the city and within the community and the surrounding area, the region, to be able to do this outreach. And the reason we can do more of this is because if a number of these slots on these jobs are committed to the building trades under the PLAs, they're committed to those apprenticeship programs that are under the PLA or CWA as well. And then those, that opens more slots for apprenticeship training. Keep in mind, the apprenticeship training in construction is earned while you learn programs. You have a specific amount of classroom training hours that have to be accomplished. But at the same time, these on-the-job training hours require real-life construction jobs that are going to be hiring apprentices to work on those jobs while they're being trained by those journeyman and those crafts on those projects. So it's like a, you know, it's a three-legged stool. If you, if you lose one leg, you're going to lose the entire thing. So everything has to work together to increase the opportunities for apprenticeship training through the commitment of a specific amount of jobs in the city, which then would increase the amount of apprenticeship slots that'd be available.
What I've been hearing so far and what I'm seeing in this, this is that there is this desire that we increase local workers, LGBTQ workers, women, and others in this workforce. But I'm, what I'm not seeing or is any guarantee that that's going to happen, any particular projects or outreach programs, this is a huge document, but none of it is actually quantifying exactly how we're going to achieve those goals. And for me, the bottom line here is that we actually need to accomplish something with this agreement. So I'd like to hear from my other council members, but so far, the information that I'm being provided is not adequate to want me to move forward.
If I may, I just wanted to add on to what, you know, Bill was saying there. I mean, if you reference page two of the staff report, it's bullet number four, right? And that covers exactly what we're talking about here. Coordinate, participate in city-based career and apprenticeship fairs and events. And I bring this up because this is something that is a passion of mine, you know, is workforce development and providing good quality opportunities to the residents and communities to which we have members that call home. Provide industry speakers for city programs and outreach events. Support local events and programs designed to recruit and develop adequate numbers of competent workers in the construction industry. Work cooperatively with the city and community groups. But I would like to add also the school districts and community college districts. That was something that wasn't included into this, and we actually have great, thriving pre-apprenticeship programs that are in the educational system. You know, the last 20 years, educational system did away with vocational training in large part all throughout the United States. There's a big flop, to be honest, and I think we're feeling the residual effects from that still today. And so the trades, the carpenters, took the initiative and we traded our own programs and very successfully, like wildfire all throughout the inland empire. And I speak the inland empire because that's the area that I cover. Elsewhere abroad, obviously, these are successful programs. So, you know, I would just like to add that you have our commitment to do everything that we can to ensure that we hit the mark in this regard, but at the end of the day, you can't force people to take these jobs, right? You can't force people, and you can't mandate, so it's a goal, and one that we actively look to hit the mark on. And I know you're itching to speak there, but RCCD did an analysis of the lifespan of the project labor agreement that was in place there. Bill referenced it already. We shared that with city staff, and I hope it made its way to you guys because it provides great information of hitting those marks in terms of local hire. Unfortunately, you know, the other sections of population that you're asking about, those weren't tabulated in those reports, in that analysis. But we look forward to, you know, whoever the administrators are going to be, to ensure that that is tabulated information, that we can, you know, set a benchmark and share that for future endeavors. So hopefully that helps answer your question.
It, it does a little bit, but it's still just very general. I mean, this is, this is like phase one, and I'm looking for something established. What are you doing in these other cities? What are the actual programs that are being implemented? I mean, I, I feel like if these are already in place in other cities, then there should be this information.
The information on the outcomes?
No, not the information on the outcomes, but the information on the programs themselves. What are you doing in Marina Valley? What are you doing in Paris to get, to make all of these goals happen?
No, we're still ramping up in Marina Valley. I think COVID sort of put us behind the, found the eight ball there, as it did many people in many areas. But the city of Paris, we've had, even through COVID, a minimum of two career fairs, career and apprenticeship fairs in the city, sponsored, co-sponsored by the Building Trades Carpenters in the, in the city. We're also within a consortium of the K-12 and Community College Districts, which is Riverside Community College District and then Central City Community College. We've put together programs with them. We're also doing MC3 through a local nonprofit in conjunction with the city of Paris. So we're getting multi-craft core curriculum, you know, residents through those courses so they're ready to apply to apprenticeship programs. So specifically for Paris, that's what we're doing. In fact, San Bernardino Community College, up until the last year because of COVID, they would not have any in-person career fairs or outreach programs. We're just now getting on board with doing these things, getting them done fairly well through Zoom processes, but it's not nearly the same as having face-to-face with young people and talking about construction careers and apprenticeships. So we have been doing those. We've had the community college up in the High Desert. We've had six successful cohorts of the multi-craft core curriculum. Those are being run in conjunction with a program they have for pre-training for the carpenters. In fact, they do some hands-on stuff up there. So, you know, we have a lot of these things. Some of the commitments we made, and we were asked to sort of do a little more hunting around and do a little more research and make some more commitments, as one of those unresolved issues that came after the November, and I think the mayor remembers this, that we did, in fact, add more, and we more specifically named some of the events that we would commit to making sure we're at to talk about apprenticeships. And I think it's under 3.5.4. We added an entire subsection E, which more specifically details some of those events that we'll be, that we'll be involved in.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I think that's, that's it for me for now. I just, I'm, there's just still a lot of details that, that I think we need.
Thank you. So, thank you for that. You know, we're an hour into this, I think, a bit more. So I just want to respond and sort of cut to the chase here because council member Corz and I have been working on this for a year, about over a year. So just to kind of detail, I know that he has comments, too. He raised his hand in his next, and then I saw mayor Pro Tim Middleton. I strongly support having a CWA in the city of Palm Springs. I think we heard from members and from residents that it's really difficult to get jobs in the city, and there's a huge disconnect between, you know, skilled labor being able to work on projects that are publicly financed in the city and then missing out on the benefits of that. And that, you know, we could, I would like to ask city staff, you know, what percentage of current jobs is not going to local companies but is going to, you know, out-of-town companies with out-of-town workers? It's a huge issue. I think we all care about building a Palm Springs for the future where people who work in Palm Springs can afford to live in Palm Springs, and there is work for working people. So I strongly support it. I think that we are not that far apart. So council member Corz and I have worked on a lot of these issues with city staff and with the building trades representatives and Southwest carpenters. I think the difference in the staff report, council member Garner, that you raised, because it, it does sort of describe the issues in a way that maybe I wouldn't. I think the difference is that the building trades representatives are doing this throughout the entire region, so they're looking at precedent and they're looking at sort of what doesn't exist in other CWAs. So for me, you know, to, for us to implement some of these for the very first time or to create precedent, I think harms the movement of getting CWAs in lots of other cities where it might be a lot more difficult, where you might have less pro-worker elected representatives who are making these decisions. So it's sort of harming the overall picture of the region. So I think that that's where they have been coming from, and I think what city staff is doing an excellent job of doing their job and advocating for the city. So the city's interest is that we have a termination clause in every single, you know, other type of contract, but the building trades position is that no other CWA has ever had that, that they've done, right? And so that's a disconnect. So we, I appreciate the issues that you raised. I think council member Corz has comments as well. I think that we are not that far apart to be able to get to some common understanding here about how to implement this in the city of Palm Springs, if that's the council's wish, which I think I, I have heard when we, you know, considered this before. So council member Corz.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, council member Garner, for your questions, because I now have less. So thank you for taking the lead, and thank you to the union representatives and staff for their work getting it this far. And I think the work got it very far, but there are those key points where some council members had issues, and that's the ones we're really discussing. So some of this is similar in my questions. So for me, it's, when we talk about the, the local contractor issue. So how do you respond, so we respond, when we get asked? when we get asked that by not having exemption for Palm Springs contractors, and we're a city of under 50,000 people, we're not Los Angeles, um, so there aren't that many, who have a majority of workers in Palm Springs, maybe more than might work otherwise on these jobs, whose employees won't be working on these jobs? And it could result in those residents getting less work. Uh, when our real goal is, right, Palm Springs residents, great that we're helping residents in the valley and other parts of the county, uh, so how do you answer that question? Because that is a concern I've heard both from residents and, of course, um, a local contractor, that, you know, their employees now are gonna have less work on Palm Springs projects funded by Palm Springs taxpayers. So I wanna see what, what your answer is, so we know that.
Fair question. Yeah. Uh, there's nothing precluding a local contractor, whether union or non-union, from performing work, bidding and perform, being awarded and performing work under these agreements. If a contractor decides not to bid work under these terms and conditions, that's simply a business decision they're making. That's, uh, that's not that we can control necessarily. So union contractors may make the same business decision not to work under the terms of, uh, of a, of a project labor or, or community workforce agreement. So, uh, like I said, we, we, we just can't design, uh, an agreement with a lot of carve-outs because then we would have, uh, an 80-page agreement with 40 pages being exceptions. And, uh, going back to Mayor Holcich's comment is that, yes, we, we try to keep standardized. And keep in mind that every time one of these, uh, discussion comes up in a, in an awarding agency, a school board, water board, city, uh, the starting point is the last agreement you negotiated. And so if we keep moving the, moving the ball on the last agreement that was negotiated, that it seems to be the starting point for the new document. And, uh, then we're gonna get a little bit run away with different terms and conditions, uh, varying conditions on these agreements that are gonna become more prevalent across the inland empire. So, uh, sorry, I don't know.
And I, and I, I appreciate that. I, from your point of view, and, um, but you also noticed, you know, there is local differences, and we're a very small city with not that many contractors, and, you know, very few workers probably in, who this would apply to, um, who are members of the unions, right? And so that, that's just a concern, and I just want an answer. I would ask, um, if, um, 'cause this doesn't change the terms of the contract, but when we look at the zip codes that we split, one into 1A, which is the two Palm Springs zip codes, and 1B, which is the rest of the valley, so Palm Springs residents always get called first? Would that be fine?
Yeah. I, you know, the zip codes, uh, generally are put together early on. Um, we certainly could look at that because tier-one zip codes currently are the zip codes that all touch or are in or touch the city of Palm Springs, and then include the 20-mile radius. So if we, I, I don't know how much difference it would make in the amount of zip codes, but I don't have a problem if we narrow that preference and...
I think what I'm suggesting is the same list, but just the first two zip codes call, you call for work are the two Palm Springs zip codes.
There's, there's two Palm Springs zip codes?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we just start with those two first and then go down to the rest of that one list?
Well, first priority would be...
92262 and 92264. So we wouldn't change the list, we would just sort of put a first priority on the two Palm Springs zip codes, since we're the only city currently who would be doing this.
It's possible, uh, councilman Corz. Uh, we would have to modify the language in the craft referral, referral request forms in a couple of our other areas, if we, if we modified that, because everything's built around the existing zips in the tier-one category. But we, we can take a look at that.
Okay. Great.
Uh, we did that, I'm sorry, it, we actually did that at Coachella Valley Unified School District a couple of years ago, is, um, in the meeting where they, uh, approved their community workforce agreement there, uh, it was brought to my attention that, uh, they wanted to modify the zip codes. Uh, in fact, it was, it was a zip code that the district had provided in the agreement. So I had no problem agreeing to that, and they conditionally approved the, uh, their CWA on the modification of those zip codes, and I don't have a problem if we look at something like that as well.
Okay, great. Um, thank you. Just a couple of other things. Uh, so on, just to be clear, so I understand it, so if the bids come in high, um, we can still rebid, right? It's just we, what you're saying is we can't rebid a, a non-compliant...